Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Canelis, present. Counselor Palumbo?
Present.
Counselor Piterelli?
Present.
Counselor Woodland?
Present.
Counselor Baze?
Present.
Counselor Donato?
Present.
Counselor Feltner?
Present.
Counselor Gannon?
Present.
President Sideris?
Present. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is public forum. Typically, it's a sign-up public forum, but most of you who haven't been here wouldn't know that. I'm going to recognize, I'm going to go over some of the rules that we have in public forum. I'm going to go through first the people that signed up, and then I'm going to talk about, I'm going to open it up to everyone else. Under the council rules, you're allowed two minutes. And I will be keeping time because there are a lot of people in the room, and you're only allowed two minutes. We do not respond to any of your questions or concerns at that time. Once everybody is done, I will close the public forum and we'll move on. So please understand, you are allowed two minutes, and I'm going to be pretty strict tonight because of the amount of people that may want to speak. First is Marilyn Petito Devaney.
Thank you. Before I make my statement, I just wanted to say, when I was on the council, I had asked that would be up to five minutes, and very few people talk that long.
Madam, we have council rules, and all I'm doing is making sure we follow the rules.
But I asked them to be changed, but...
It's two minutes, so...
No respect, that's okay.
You're already using your time, unfortunately.
All right, ready? Okay. "I'm asking nine of you councilors, not four as required, to use the chartered tabling privilege and vote to table the Galen Street project until next meeting. If you are ready to vote, waiting next meeting will not interfere with your vote. We are asking for time for residents to be fully educated. I appreciate this project has been before you for a time, but people don't know. People have obligations in their lives, children's activities, work schedules, meeting on the organizations they belong to, meeting with friends, and more. There are so many meetings going on, it's impossible for people to be knowledgeable on everything, or even attend. Last week, there were four meetings of the same night in Watertown. If you table us, you are allowing the neighborhood the opportunity to invite the developers to meet, to ask questions, to give opinions. Please allow the South Side residents this opportunity. The South Side has always been the forgotten area of Watertown. I know. I came from the hospital when I was born and grew up in Watertown Street. Some people called it Newton. You are not voting a district. Watertown is only four square miles. We are one district. A correction, the planners call it South Square on the plan. No such place. It's the South Side. Please give respect to the South Side neighbors. Please table us to the next meeting so they can meet with developers and give their opinions. Thank you."
Thank you. Dennis Duff.
Thank you. Dennis Duff, 33 Spruce Street, but I represent the Aldridge condominiumium trust of 16 families. You have a unique opportunity to create a gateway into Watertown. I'm not sure whether the 17 percent zoning change will afford that opportunity, but we would like a chance to meet with the developers and go over possibilities that will enhance our town. Because remember, making Watertown bigger is not making Watertown necessarily better. What we do should make the town better. And I know I'm not allowed to say how the traffic on Aldridge Road from this would destroy Aldridge Road, but I hope you'll use your wisdom and give us a chance to meet with the developers. Thank you for your time.
Deborah Peterson.
Hi. We've been here before. We come again, asking that development in this town reflect our desire to respect the character of our neighborhoods, increase mobility, expand affordable housing, and contribute to reaching the town's goal for net-zero energy. As well, we welcome new uses that will add vitality to the town. We are looking for a process that pays attention to all these goals. We've been to planning and zoning board meetings. We have experienced how little power they have to reject or amend a proposal that meets the zoning requirements. Once the zoning change occurs, they will not be able to protect us from surprises due to lack of adequate deliberation right here and now. As we sit in traffic, we are weary of a formulaic new traffic light that is going to make everything all right. It is zoning that has the power to shape development. It should be responding to our expressed goals as well as those of a developer. It is not enough to say this meets a recommendation of a comprehensive plan. There are trade-offs among various goals. We are here to say that we want a more planned response. Ad-hoc zoning changes in response to a specific developer's proposal are not the way to get the best reconciliation between the community's needs and development. We look to the town council to ensure that specific zoning changes be constructed with public input and evaluated in the context of our larger community needs.
Thank you. No one else has signed up. I will now recognize people who haven't. Lodia.
Thank you. Lodia Thomas, 67 Marion Road. When this all brouhaha started up, I kept thinking, how did I miss this? How did I miss this? I figured it out. I was on a plane to Vietnam, so I didn't come to the meeting in November. Usually, when I come home, I go back and look at key meetings to try to figure out what was going on while I was gone. I'm completely disturbed that trying to find minutes, the last minutes that were posted for the planning board are dated September. I called up Jeff Brown and asked him if the minutes had been done or not, and whether any issues that I should be aware of, and he said, "They've been done, they've been approved, but they're not on site." So there was no way for me to even review what had gone on at this meeting. What's Plan B? Well, let me go to the tape. Thank God we have cable TV. I went to the tape and I looked at the issues that came up there. This is nothing against the developer or the possibilities that are there, but I'd like to echo what Deb Peterson has said and everybody in the community is saying. We have not revisited what we have done. We have not revisited the framework of 2011. We have not revisited the comprehensive plan. And the changes are going so rapidly in this town, we don't know what's gone right and what's gone wrong. And that requires discussion with the community. We elect you to represent us. You are not putting the pressure on this town to get this kind of dialogue going. And it's hurting just the quality of life, but it's also hurting how we feel about each other. And I just can't stand all the backbiting. In speaking with several counselors, I heard different things that people thought were being promised to them. But as one person noted, nothing is in writing. And that concerns me. So in looking at that tape, these are the things that I heard. And Gary Shaw had a lot to say about this, and as did Jason Cohen. We know nothing about specifics. We know nothing how this will affect street life, traffic, massing. No implications. What's a mixed vibrant streetscape? We've heard that again and again. We've had lots of promises from Athena, from Arsenal Yards. We know many promises have been broken. As Jason said, and I'll go as fast as I can, Mark.
Lodia.
What are the benefits? Where's our leverage? You're our leverage. That's it. You're our leverage. Use it.
Thank you. Next, Marcia. Please identify yourself for the record.
Will do. I'm Marcia Ciro from 13 Bay Street. So this development could be a good thing for Watertown, could be a good thing for Galen Street, may be a good thing for the whole area around that place. But the problem is, we don't know. And all our developments get green-lighted here, and they're basically green-lighted on promises. And unfortunately, we have a lot of broken promises in Watertown right now. So it's not the developers, it really isn't. It's you guys. You are not, our comprehensive plan is out of date, our zoning is out of date, the design guidelines aren't working. If the design guidelines were working, we wouldn't have really cheap buildings like that at the corner of Rosedale and Pleasant Street. Have you yet taken a look at those, by the way? They should never have been allowed to go up. And there's many others. We've got a building up on Main Street that doesn't have enough parking. It's a mess. Somebody goes back, we petitioned to have a moratorium on development until we could get our ducks in a row. We refused to grant that petition. Instead, we got design guidelines. None of it's working. We have master plans that go uncompleted. We have no follow-up by the town. There is something really rotten in this process, and it's not serving Watertown well. I'm hoping that you will support Lisa in pressing the pause button on this, something we should have done years ago. We need to revisit the town documents, as other people have said. Developers will have to wait a little bit. We're not saying no to anything. We just need to get out of the back room and create real solutions to our problems. We need vision. We need to think about consequences 10 to 20 years down the road. Just because a development is not in your district doesn't mean it doesn't matter. We will understand how much you really care about the future of Watertown by how you vote tonight. No more green-lighting zoning changes or development before we have the structures in place that will ensure a high-quality development and quality of life for the whole of Watertown. Thank you.
Next, yes, please identify yourself for the record.
Good evening. I'm Greg Gerard at 41 Maple Street. I'm here with my wife, Mimi. We're relative newcomers. We arrived here seven years ago. But a little ancestry.com research revealed that my eighth great-grandfather got here in 1630, and his name is on the founder's monument, William Hager, along with his son and his wife. We're not NIMBYs. We're not NIMBYs. We're YIMBYs. Yes, in my backyard, spelled with a silent H at the end, however. And there are a lot of "however"s in this development. We met with Lisa in a meeting that she had on Thursday and then again on Saturday. We've reviewed the BDG, Boston Development Group, presentation. We've looked at its website. It has an excellent national and local track record, Cleveland Circle, for instance, and it has some great partners in it with VHB, National Firm with the Watertown office, and Elkus Manfredi, both quality organizations. They own, we understand, additional property in Watertown. Success here would augur well for additional quality development. BDG is well aware of our development strategy for the South Square, if I may use that word. It, presentation included references to the strategic framework for economic development and the 2015 comprehensive plan. However, BDG's presentation isn't convincing. Perhaps it's poor communications, and it's just a single presentation. They may have been more, made more. Slides alone, without narrative, never tell the complete story. We expect to see them communicate its intent, engage Watertown in planning and zoning reviews, and apply our recommendations in its plan. I hope we make that statement and that expectation known to BDG. It seems to us, quick review, by the way, I was an urban planner in graduate school eons ago. The vision might be realized without the zoning amendment or with the zoning amendment. There are several concerns, however, no matter which way we go forward, and we've listed five. Traffic generation is a concern. We've all talked about that.
Okay, sir. Sorry, the timer's up. Sorry.
Could my wife continue?
She can.
There you go. Come on. That's the deal you made. Come on. Right here.
Where are you? Hello? Where'd you leave off? I told you to shorten this up. Traffic generation in terms of parking supply spill over...
Could you please give us your name?
Mimi Hunt, 41 Maple Street. "Traffic generation in terms of parking supply, spill-over parking, and mitigation strategies to encourage transit-oriented computation to and from the development. How will the project in design permit use marketing and lease strategies capitalized on the site's transit-oriented development location? How will planning development reviews and developer commitments mitigate traffic impact and spill-over parking? Urban design in terms of trading off more height for less footprint, site design for more public, open-access green space, setbacks, and design for an attractive streetscape. The proposal presents two conceptual site plans under current zoning and with the zoning amendment. The conceptual site plan under current zoning envisions retail, less mass on the Galen Street and more green space, but forgoes the triangular park at the north end of the site. The conceptual site plan with the zoning amendment envisions the triangular park, but forgoes the retail and adds mass to Galen Street. Is this trade-off necessary? How will this development planning amendment, subsequent design, and land use decisions and the nature of development itself set precedence for future redevelopment in South Square? This is a key concern, given the lack of master plan for the area. The town needs a planned development district to ensure that decisions solve for South Square and the Galen Street corridor. Will the project strengthen the identity of the town as its strategic location in South Square and makes finest use of its best assets, in particular here, riverfront trails and other parks, unique landmarks, and interesting village centers? Will the project be characterized by high-quality, attractive architecture, site design, and enhance the lower street, Galen streetscape?"
Next, yes, please identify yourself for the record.
My name is Sam Gilardi. I live at 46 Aldridge Road. I don't have nearly the deep connections to the town as founders. My wife also decided she'd rather stay at home and watch Cheers. So, but I am here. And I'd like to echo all the comments we had before, and especially the idea that I'm not against this development in particular. I think it's just, there's a lot of unknowns, and there's a lot of questions that are in the air that sort of release, that speak to a bigger issue for our area on the South Side. Is, right, the plan to connect my street to Nonantum could be a great solution for traffic. It could help alleviate problems in the area. It could make it worse. There's no traffic study. We don't know how that's going to help. We don't know how it's going to impact Galen Street. We don't know even if the MBTA is on board with it. So there's a lot of unknowns about the project that I think weren't having more study. We don't have to vote yes or no on the amendment today, but it's worth studying more. It also brings up bigger issues of Galen Street and Center Street when you get into Newton. Right? The Pike is being rebuilt. They're going to close Exit 18 in another 10 years, or in another two years, up to 10 years. So that, all that traffic's going to come down by us, down on this Nonantum, so people can get non-astro. So how is this project going to help that development? So we need to have a bigger vision, both for what we want the area to look like now, but also how we're going to get there in the next 10 years, between traffic, between congestion on the Pike. Newton's also signaling, from reading their planning documents, they're looking to redevelop Newton Corner first, as well as the Center Street area. So this seems to be an opportunity for us as a town to work with them, to have both a long-range vision for the area as well as address this particular project. Again, I'm not against it or for it. I just think we need to know more information. And I think it could be a good thing for the neighborhood if it's done well.
Thank you. Next. Yes. Please identify yourself for the record.
Hi, my name is Paula Paulus. I live in Newton. However, I've spent most of my life in Watertown. My family owns 61 Galen Street, which is Farina's. The building located at 61 Galen Street, property located at 15-17 Aldridge Road, which abuts that, and it's the first house in on Aldridge Road. I also own one other property in Watertown where I lived for many years. I didn't come prepared to speak, however, having heard neighbors and people, I just feel that I just want to make you aware of how we feel. I look at the lot across the street from my business every day and have for the past 30-plus years. I am thrilled that it is finally being developed in what looks to be a thoughtful way. I do, however, think that the town, meaning you, need to take a different approach to how things have been done. The development along Pleasant Street is a complete disgrace and a complete nightmare. There is no long-term plan for traffic, beautification of the neighborhood. Everything revolves around Watertown Square. It's the last piece of the puzzle. So please, let's not blow it. Can you please take the time to allow a development that is thoughtfully planned out, that addresses traffic, having a nice neighborhood, the concerns that everyone else has brought up? I just think you have this golden opportunity to do something extraordinary. You have Boston, you have Alston, you have Newton, and you have Waltham. Everything merges there. It's your opportunity. Please take the time to hear what people have to say, work together, and come up with a plan that is really nice for what we want to call a neighborhood. Thank you.
Next. Anyone else? Yes.
Mark Peterson, 9 Westland Road. I just want to say very briefly, I'm neither a founding father of Watertown nor a urban planner, but it seems to me like this process is upside down. Because it seems to me like, that, like, first you decide the zoning and the land use, and then you decide the development that fits it. And it seems to me like this process is going in the other direction.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to make a comment? Last chance. Don't hesitate.
Hi, good evening. My name is Net Farrell. I live on Union Street. I've been there for four generations with my family. And actually, my great-great-great-grandfather came here in 1847, got married here in Watertown as well. So he was a laborer, probably worked on our streets and our bridges. And I wanted to echo everybody else's sentiments about what they spoke of tonight, about tabling the vote tonight till the 25th. And I found this quote in the 2015 comprehensive plan, that "We are trying to make a unifying architecture, and new construction and improvements are supposed to protect and retain the local historic context." So I'd like to keep that in mind for the councilors to consider in their vote tonight. Thank you.
Next.
Michelle Kokenauer, 37 Paul Street. And I'm just going to keep my comment short and simple. If there's questions that have not been fully answered, then I don't think you should take a vote on it tonight. I think all the answers need to be, you know, questions need to be answered, all of them, before you can make a really well-informed decision. And also, don't feel that developers should be running the show anymore. Thank you.
Anyone else? Last chance. Okay, I now close the public forum, and we're going to move on to the rest of our agenda. The next item is examination of minutes. Can I get a motion on the minutes of January 28th, please?
Mr. President, I make a motion that we adopt the minutes of January 28th as written.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. I'd like to have a motion to suspend the rules to bring up item 7A at this time.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and 7A. It's a public hearing and vote on a petition for a grant of location from N-Star Electric Company, doing business as EverSource Energy, to install 27 plus or minus feet of conduit in Main Street northwesterly from manhole number 7921, turning southwesterly approximately 117 feet northwest of Church Street to upgrade existing electric service to accommodate a rooftop antenna at 78 Main Street. Please identify yourself.
Jackie Duffy, EverSource Energy.
Thank you.
Would like to install 27 feet on Main Street to accommodate a rooftop antenna on 78 Main Street.
Okay. Since this is a public hearing as well, if there's any member of the public that wishes to be heard on this particular petition, you're welcome to come to the podium. Seeing none, I close the public hearing and ask for a motion from the council.
Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve the grant location for N-Star for the underground conduit at 78 Main Street.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. Counselor Canelis.
Thank you. Representing the town would be Mr. Magoon, or... Customarily, there's a list of the butters. I don't see a list attached.
I guess that was inadvertently left out of the package. It was mailed to all butters.
Do you happen to know how many?
I don't off the top of my head. I don't know if you have that. Marilyn, do you have that? I can certainly get the butters list and provide that to the council.
Are there any other questions or comments?
So I just, so the conduit's going to be entirely within the sidewalk, none within the roadbed?
Yes.
So, and I just, the question about the traffic management, because this is kind of a busy area.
You have a police officer.
So is it going to be done, and maybe the DPW could answer the question. The hours, when it's going to be done, so that trucks don't block the traveling? Is that, can somebody just speak to that about maybe... Is it going to be limited to non-peak hours? Because I know there's parking allowed in front of that, I think, from 10 to 4.
Mr. President, members of the council, I don't have the exact information with me tonight as far as when the exact, the timeframe of the work that would take place. It's certainly something that we will consider if it hasn't already been considered, and I can get the information back to you immediately.
Okay. Any other questions or concerns? Counselor Gannon.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I note that the purpose is to accommodate a rooftop antenna. Is this for more cell tower, cell tower locations?
It's just for one rooftop. That's it.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Canelis.
As a follow-up, how long will this procedure actually take to complete?
It shouldn't take more than two days.
Two days.
Weather permitting.
Thank you.
It's always a challenge. Any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Let the record show that Counselor Donato stepped out of the room to recuse himself. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules to bring up item 8B.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. 8B is a consideration and approval of submitting the Accelerated Repair Program Statement of Interest to the Massachusetts School Building Authority. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. President, and our members of the council. This correspondence was forwarded to you from Dr. Dean Galston, the superintendent of schools, looking for the town council's support of moving forward a statement of interest to the, for the Accelerated Repair Program under the Massachusetts School Building Authority. We provide some background information on it. The Accelerated Repair Program is primary for repair or replacement of roofs, windows, and/or boilers, and applying for the Accelerated Repair could potentially mitigate the cost of approximately 48 percent of the total cost. The statement of interest closing date is this Friday. The review process for the Accelerated Review Project, program will begin once the district has submitted a properly completed statement of interest and all the required documentation, including votes of the municipal governing body as well as the school committee, which the school committee voted on this last night. The accelerated repair in question is a replacement of 21-year-old boilers at the middle school. The project is, totals $1.7 million. It's listed in the fiscal year 2021 capital improvement program, which was submitted last Tuesday evening. Prior to consideration of the statement of interest to move forward the Accelerated Repair Program, Mr. President, members of council, I'd like to bring forward Dr. Dean Galston, the superintendent of schools, to briefly speak on the proposed Accelerated Repair Program. Again, the middle school, 21-year-old boilers. And again, the school committee took this up last night. Mr. President, members of council, Dr. Dean Galston, superintendent of schools.
Excellent, thank you. And I'm also inviting Lori Cable, who's the director of public buildings, to join us as well. So I think that what we just heard is pretty much a good summary of the Accelerated Repair Program through the MSBA. This is a program specifically designed for roofs, windows, and boilers, and it's meant to help towns when they have an acute need in terms of replacing these, you know, fairly expensive items throughout the course of their life. So we would like to submit a statement of interest to apply for that grant program. Over the years, you know, the MSBA grants somewhere between, I mean, some years it's $48,000, $48 million, up to almost $100 million. Every year, it depends upon how much money they have available, but... depends upon how much money they have available, but certainly it's something that I think that we should apply for. We might not be accepted, but we know that the boilers are in need of replacement. That's why they're on the Capital Improvement Program. And so by having this grant funding, it could mitigate the cost by 48%. So it's a great move for the town, I believe. And as they say, nothing ventured, nothing gained. And if we were to decide not to go forward with the project, it's the same thing. We could just reject the grant. So, but I think that it's important to at least put forth the application. And Lori Cable has just some more information about the boilers?
There is one correction. Originally, we thought it was their boilers were 21-years-old, and they're actually 27-year-olds, so that does help our case. This was, you'll see in the FY '21 submission, I have 17 projects that I'm putting forward, some schools and some towns. This was my number one of 17 across the board. This is something that is needed. It's something we're going to have to do regardless of whether we go forward with this grant. So I do think that this is just a positive thing all around for us.
If I could just add one thing, you know, we are very, very grateful for the support for our three elementary school projects and then moving forward with the high school. But in the meanwhile, we have to make sure that our middle school is also equally taken care of, and this is just a step that will continue that process.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to put this on the floor?
So be it resolved that having convened an open meeting on February 11th, 2020, prior to the SOI submission closing date, the Town Council of Watertown, in accordance with its charter, bylaws, and ordinances, has voted to authorize the superintendent to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority the Statement of Interest Form dated February 14th, 2020, for the Watertown Middle School located at 68 Waverly Avenue, Watertown, Massachusetts, which describes and explains the following deficiencies and the priority categories for which an application may be submitted to the Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future. Replacement, renovation, or modernization of school facility systems, such as roofs, windows, boilers, heating, and ventilation systems, to increase energy conservation and decrease energy-related costs in a school facility, specifically to replace two 27-year-old boilers and the distribution system with high-efficiency boilers to heat the entire facility, and hereby further specifically acknowledges that by submitting the Statement of Interest Form, the Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance or approval of an application, the awarding of a grant or any other funding commitment from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, or commits the Town of Watertown to filing an application for funding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. Councilor Palomba.
Just wondering if you had any history of other situations where a town has applied for a major renovation of a high school or another, and also at the same time is applying for this money for the boilers?
Yes. So for example, in 2019, the city of Lowell applied for Accelerated Repair Program grant funding, and they received it. And as we know, Lowell's in the midst of a high school project as well. That's just an example. It's not, just because you're in the pipeline for a core program, doesn't exclude you from the Accelerated Repair Program. Again, I think their theory is we have to keep all of our buildings functional, so they don't use that against us.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And I'd just like to add, in the application that we put forward, we do say what our priority is, and our priority will remain the high school. So that is noted in the application.
It's nice to see the middle school getting something.
Are there any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. We're going to go back to item number six, which is unfinished business from prior meetings, and it's a vote on a proposed zoning map amendment by removing the parcels of land located at 70, 78, 84 to 86, and 88 Galen Street, from the limited business district into the I-2 industrial zoning district, in keeping with the budding properties. Before I recognize Mr. McGoon to tell us why we're here again, this was scheduled for a public hearing at the last meeting. We had a public hearing. The public hearing is closed, so we do not reopen the public hearing again at this time. So I'm going to recognize Steve McGoon to just bring us up to date on what we're doing this evening.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council, town manager, and the public. Couple things I wanted to do. One, the council president asked me to address a couple points. But before I do that, I wanted to thank all of you for coming out tonight. One of the challenges that we have as planners is getting community engaged and talking about planning issues. And, you know, it's great to see all these people here. I had a conversation with young lady in the audience, talking about some of the ways that people can connect to town government and be aware of what's going on and be engaged. So, you know, it's a pleasure to have everyone here and engaged, and hopefully will continue, particularly when we talk about our long-range planning efforts and have opportunities to talk about the policy direction of the town. So the two points I wanted to touch on are, you know, the idea of comprehensive planning, long-range planning, and how this rezoning fits, does not fit with that. And then also talk a little bit about the zoning process or the development process. So, you know, we've gone through a number of comprehensive planning efforts, long-range planning documents, you know, talked about this side of the Charles River and its association with Galen Street and Watertown Square. Back in the 80s, we talked about some development concepts for this area, the strategic framework for economic development, talked about a number of areas in town where we were seeking to attract economic investment, attract redevelopment, to bring particularly that activity to properties that were either undeveloped or underdeveloped, and look to encourage activity to take place in these areas. We also looked at some different business clusters and how we could bring those to Watertown, and one of those being, you know, the life sciences. And obviously, that has begun to happen, as we've had a number of life science buildings being constructed in town. The comprehensive plan, certainly, and both of these documents involved a lot of public outreach and a lot of public meetings, a lot of public discussion. Looked at a number of land use policies, a number of objectives to try and both encourage economic development and reinvestment in town, but also efforts to preserve the character of the community and to, you know, look at ways to do that. As a result of the comprehensive plan, we've done a number of implementation steps. Some of those are very significant and major. Already tonight was mention of the design guidelines, which was a specific implementation step related to the comprehensive plan, and looking at how those developments in commercial and large residential projects are done, and what things can be done to improve on those projects from a design perspective as opposed to just a land use category. Regional mixed-use development's another one, where the plan talked about inviting that kind of development to the east end of town, and we went through a long, involved process of creating that zoning district and creating a master plan for Ursula Yards that implemented that. There's also more minor changes. But what the question before you tonight is not that comprehensive long-range planning effort. What's before you tonight is a request to change the zoning on a portion, a small portion relatively speaking, of a parcel or parcels under one ownership that a property owner hopes to exercise their property rights and make use of. I think a lot of what you heard tonight was a concern about commitments to specific mitigation strategies or a particular development for the site. And it's important, I think, for the council to know and for members of the public to know that that's not an appropriate step at this point in the process. The idea that the council would say, we'll grant you the zoning amendment if you provide certain things, is really amounts to contract zoning, which is not appropriate, not legal. What we do is through the development process, when that project is before the town, a project for a particular property, then we talk about the mitigation strategies to offset the impacts of that development. We don't do that at this point in the process, and it wouldn't be appropriate to do that at this point in the process. I understand that, you know, that's frustrating for some people. I'm sure it's frustrating for the council, because you, I'm sure you would like to have that opportunity to take that bite at the apple. But again, you know, I don't think this is an appropriate point in the process to do that. The development process, once a project is conceived of, we'll have public meetings, we'll have community meetings, and we'll go out and have conversations about the things that people talked about tonight, about the traffic, how that can be accommodated, how it relates to MBTA yard, how it relates to Charles River, what we do with Galen Street, and does Water Street connect across Galen Street from Aldridge? You know, those are all things that are important, things that need to be discussed, studied, analyzed, and decisions made about what's appropriate to do. But those things can't be done at this point in the process. Again, because it's, it wouldn't be appropriate, but also those studies haven't been done. That analysis hasn't been done. What's before you tonight is a request to change some of the parcels from commercial zone to industrial zone, to make a consistent zoning pattern across the property. The reason I would submit to you that I think that that is an appropriate request at this time, isn't because, you know, the developer is dictating to us what is to be done. It's because a consistent ownership has happened across those parcels. That provides an opportunity for that property to develop in a way that is consistent and most efficient. If you deal with different setbacks, different heights, different standards within those two zoning districts, it creates a much more difficult development pattern. That's not to say that what ultimately will happen on the property has been determined. It certainly hasn't. But I think that the request to make it a consistent zoning pattern across the property makes sense, both from the perspective of implementation of the comprehensive plan, but also from what could then ultimately be submitted to the town as a development proposal. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions the council may have.
Are there any questions of Steve at this time? Councilor Donato?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. McGoon, I think it might be helpful for you to explain to the people in the room and, you know, to the councilors as well. I know you touched on that after tonight, regardless of what happens, there would be some future meetings. Could you maybe go into a little more detail about what those future meetings would entail, who they would be in front of, what?
Certainly. So the way a process would typically work with a project that's submitted to the town, they would usually come to the town and meet with staff, often multiple times if it's a project of any significance, as we talk with them about what issues they might need to address, how they've gone about addressing that. Not that they necessarily need to do exactly what we say, but we have an opportunity to give some back and forth. The next two steps in the process, one is a developers' conference, where then that developer would come in and meet with all departments of the town. And we would provide collectively comments on the project and provide some feedback and discuss those plans with the developer. There'd also then be a community meeting, where the developer would be required to provide notice out to the community. We'd schedule a meeting with the district counselor. The developer would come and present the project to the neighbors. That can happen sometimes earlier, sometimes later, depending a little bit on the project. Sometimes developers will want to come to the community with not an entirely blank slate, but more of a blank slate, and ask what the community wants. Other times, developers will come to the community with more developed plans and say, this is what I'm proposing. What do you think? There's pros and cons to both of those. A lot of times, if you do the more blank slate, some of the feedback you'll get is, well, you're not telling us what you're really going to do. And on the other hand, if you have them developed, sometimes you'll get the feedback of, well, you've already decided what you're going to do, so you don't care what we think. So there are pros and cons to both of those. But there's at least one community meeting to provide that feedback. The developer then would, based on both of those opportunities to get some feedback, both from the town and from the community, would make adjustments. We can have a second community meeting if need be, if those adjustments are either significant or haven't, you know, met our standards. Either way, we could have at least one additional community meeting. And then they would submit for a planning board review. Once they submit for planning board review, then it'll be scheduled for a meeting before the planning board, and then followed by the zoning board. There's also obviously public notice to those meetings.
So now, if the zoning map amendment passes tonight, that we would go through the steps you just outlined, if the zoning map amendment fails this evening, the developer can still proceed, just they would have to go under the existing zoning for the site?
Yeah. So if I could follow up on that. So we developed a comprehensive plan, which laid out a number of policies. Our zoning is consistent with that comprehensive plan. So again, this is an adjustment to a couple parcels within an area. It's not an implementation in itself of the comprehensive plan. The conference committee didn't say these couple retail parcels ought to be industrial. So in that context, yes, if this failed tonight, the developer could then come in and basically follow the same process with a project using that mix of zoning, which again, at least in my estimation, will result in a more disjointed development proposal and not as efficiently designed one.
If I could ask one more question. There had been some discussion this evening, and then I'm sure my fellow councilors received similar emails with some discussions about possible moratoriums for this area of town, where is there anything we could do at this point in time that would specifically address a moratorium at this site in town?
So the legal standards for a moratorium would be if we've decided that we are entertaining a change in policy, a different direction in policy, and we want to have some time to consider that change in policy, and in order to avoid a rush to the altar, as it were, of projects, to beat that potential change in regulations, you would put a moratorium in place to prevent that. It would have to be for a specific period of time, and it can't be, you know, an extended period of time. And it would have to be specific to what that policy change would be. So in this case, if we're talking about a moratorium for this particular property, I don't think that would be appropriate. If we were talking about something a little broader, then we would need to talk about what the purpose of that moratorium would be, and what we're doing to address it.
So, I'm sorry, just as a follow-up. So I think, I guess maybe to fine-tune my question, if a moratorium was something that this council were to consider, any projects that would be submitted between now and the time that that moratorium would be brought up for discussion would be grandfathered under current zoning?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Before I recognize anyone else, I have a couple of comments. If you have a question of Steve, it's fine. But if you have comments, I want to wait till, if you have a question of Steve?
Yes.
Yes, please.
Thank you. The last time we were here during the public hearing, I posed questions to you regarding the difference between the limited business district and the I-2, specific to some of the pluses and minuses. Since we do have a full house here this evening, would you be able to just give us an outline of the setbacks, the open space, one versus the other, and the possible benefits since the majority of the parcel is an I-2? And now we're, we could be including the limited business, the 17%, as part of the I-2. So then we're increasing the open space, et cetera. So if you could just enlighten us?
Sure.
Thank you.
In the LB zone, the front setback, there is none. The side setback is 10 feet, and the rear setback is 15 feet. In the I-2 zone, there is a front setback of 10 feet with a maximum of 30 feet. There's 25-foot side yard setback and a 30-foot rear setback. In terms of, the other thing that you'd asked about before was the height. In the LB zone, the maximum height is 40 feet and four stories, and in the I-2 zone, it's 55 feet or five stories. There's notes associated with both of those, which have some further clarification, but that's generally speaking. You also asked about the minimum open space. In the LB zone, the minimum open space is 10%, and in the I-2 zone, it's also 10%.
If I may, as a follow-up. A local resident inquired today as to page 18 of the conceptual site plan that was offered to us, which actually showed the open space. And reference in small print is a roof garden. So would that be considered as open space? So would that be considered as open space? Or would that be an amenity to the building? Or would it be open space that would be available to the general public?
So a portion of the open space can be not available to the general public and still meet the requirements of open space, not the entirety of it, though.
Okay. I will say that, I'll caveat this and say that I am disappointment, disappointed. Well, we can further discuss it when we get to that timeframe, but just that there is concern about using the open space as a roof garden that would not be necessarily available to the general public.
And, you know, I think that is something that we need to revisit, the definitions and allowances for open space and what is and isn't allowed. I would certainly agree with you, that's something we should revisit.
Thank you.
Questions for Steve? Please.
Two questions through, thank you, Mr. President, through the chair to Mr. McGoon. One is that, ah, just went out of my head. But one is, would you say that self-storage is, you know, a goal of the comprehensive plan for use that we want to advance in the community?
A goal that we want to advance? No, I wouldn't say self-storage is necessarily a goal that we want to advance.
Or use we want to advance, okay, thank you. And my second question is, it sounds like you're perhaps proposing that we may be moving to a neighborhood plan or a sub-area plan in your comments earlier, suggesting that looking at Galen Street, looking at streetscape, that that is beyond this parcel because we don't have that in the comprehensive plan? Is that, did you mean to allude to that, or are you not thinking about that?
Well, I think as we've discussed before, I think there's several ways that we could go into that level of planning. That's certainly something that the council's body could say, we're interested in doing that, and give direction to the administration to do that. That's certainly something that, again, I could bring forward to the council and suggest that, that hasn't happened to date. Certainly, that's something that the public could also express an interest in and would be something that then I would think the council might want to address. I don't think in my comments earlier, I suggested that's something that we're necessarily undertaking at this time, but that's certainly something we could in the future. Sure.
And the last follow-up to Counselor Donato's point. One example of a moratorium could be used is a moratorium on projects over a certain size or within a district zone for up to a year or up to two years while we advance a neighborhood plan or while we do zoning reform. Could you speak a little more to that?
Yeah, again, I think if we're going to do that, we have to be very specific about what the issue is that we want to address. And regardless of what we make it specific to, a particular area of town, a particular size of project, or a particular, you know, whatever, we need to make it clear, this is the issue that we hope to address. And it can't just, you know, it just can't be this broad concept of, gosh, we've had a lot of development going on, so let's have a moratorium. It needs to be specific to an address of a particular issue. And then we need to set out the process to address that issue and develop how we're going to address it from a regulatory perspective and set out a process. And however long that process takes would be how long a moratorium could be in place.
Thank you.
Counselor Gannon.
Thank you, Mr. President. Heard some comments that, heard some comments the effect that this is the developer driving the process and the town is not involved. Could you tell us how we got here? How we talked about the evolution of the comprehensive plan, the strategic framework for economic development? Talked about the prior planning that got us here tonight.
Sure, you know, both of those comprehensive plan documents took years to evolve and come to fruition. The strategic framework, I don't remember the exact date, but I think it was adopted in 2011. The comprehensive plan was adopted in 2015. Both of those involved a pretty extensive public process, going out to the community, having work sessions where we talked about, you know, what's important to the community, both in terms of future vision, but also recognizing our existing context and the things that are important to the community. The Charles River became, you know, one of the focal points for the plan, its importance both in terms of a natural resource, but also, you know, creating a significant part of the identity of the town, and also something that we should take advantage of. So a lot of the policies that evolved out of that focused on some of those things. You know, we talked earlier about development of design standards. That was also something that came out of the plan as a way to address the form of development beyond just, again, the function of development, not just zoning of particular categories, but also taking that next step further. We did that for large commercial and residential projects. We began the process of developing residential design standards for something that would go to the, you know, single and two-family residential development. That hasn't been adopted yet, but that's still something we would like to bring forward. You know, again, a lot of concerns from people about going forward with that and how that relates to individual property rights. And I'm afraid I'm getting a little off topic, but you want to talk a little bit about the, sort of, the process of getting here with those broader planning documents? Hopefully, it gives you a sense of that.
Okay. With regard to the I-2 zoning, I understand the FAR, the floor area ratio could be, there's a process within the FAR process to increase open space on a property that's zoned for I-2. Could you talk about that?
Yeah, so if the FAR is increased, and that was one of the things, getting came over, if you increase FAR to two, then the open space requirement goes up to 40%. So it does significantly increase it.
Okay, and with regard to determination of open space, I'm assuming it's the planning board and the zoning board can push a developer to maximize open space in a I-2 zone?
Sure, yep. And again, going back to some of the earlier comments, you know, that open space requirement goes back to the comment of trying to create higher density, but, or higher form of development to leave more open space.
Right. And, Mr. President, one last question. The MBTA property, I've been hearing a lot about, well, why can't we do a major plan for the MBTA property? But I've been reading about the electric buses. The MBTA is seeking to go more green and have an electric bus backed up by a battery. And I see that there are the trolley tracks from the 71 bus lead into this Carburn site. Has the MBTA expressed any inclination that they may be willing to get rid of this property? Are they seeking to retain it for any purpose? What are you hearing?
Sure. I would offer a couple of things. One, I think one of the great frustrations in the community has always been the MBTA bus, you know, burn and the idea that there ought to be something there. If nothing else, a much better transportation hub. And there's always been frustration that we've really gotten little direction from the MBTA. I will say, in more recent years, I think they have been very clear that they do intend to keep that property. They do want to engage in looking at opportunities to make better use of the property. So I've certainly suggested to this developer, assuming that they go forward, that it will be important to have some conversation with MBTA. The MBTA, on their part, has expressed interest in using the property more efficiently, making a much better transit hub there. They also, as you just indicated, are looking at improvements with regard to battery buses and things of that nature. Whether that will, you know, come to fruition there or not, don't know yet.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Baze?
Yeah.
Questions?
I just have a question. If we were to sort of, and I think it's to you, maybe it would be from Mr. Rich. If we were to take some time, look at this, you know, refer it to committee, could we come back in a couple of months and still vote for the rezoning?
I'll leave that to Attorney Rich.
Mr. President, through you.
Yes.
Where we stand right now, as you're aware, the public hearing has closed and it's the matters before the town council. Town council has a period of 90 days within which it can consider this zoning amendment, so it can continue this matter for a period of up to 90 days before it takes a vote. Beyond, from the date of the public hearing?
Planning board?
No, no, for the date of the city council public hearing. So you have a 90-day period now. And once that 90-day period closes, if the zoning amendment is not adopted or acted upon, a new public hearing would have to be noticed, the process would essentially begin again. I know there was reference to the discussion about the moratorium concept. I don't know if that's somewhat what is being discussed also, but keep in mind that moratorium could only be adopted through a zoning process as well. That's a zoning amendment would have to go back to the planning board for a zoning amendment to implement a moratorium. As Mr. McGoon expressed, that would be a limited time, probably between six months to maybe as much as a year, but would be, would be general, would not be to a specific property, but to a specific area. And again, that would go through a planning board public hearing and then a hearing before the council as well.
Counselor Woodland?
Thank you, Mr. President. I actually had a really long statement prepared, but I'd rather just ask a bunch of questions right now and then give an abbreviated version of that later. Something that was, you had mentioned very briefly that I want to follow up on was that you had indicated if the site had gone through without this change that's being proposed this evening, that in your mind, we would get a project, I forget the exaggerate you used, but a worse-looking project. Can you elaborate on that?
Sure. Again, I think the developer then would come forward with a plan that would make use of the property and would have to deal with the different requirements of the two zoning districts that exist. So the frontage along Galen Street, or at least a portion of it, would have to comply with the LB zoning requirements, and the remainder of the property could comply with the I-2 zoning requirements. At least in the concepts that they provided in their package, again, very general concepts, they've indicated that would result in a much less efficient design. I certainly can't argue with that. I think it very much would result in a much less efficient design and therefore a less desirable project.
So because you have consistency in zoning, it allows the town more opportunity to have, you know, connections through the site, more open space, better ability to do things with transportation. Is that correct?
Sure, yep.
So when you gave this initial report, this sounds very consistent with what you had told the planning board back in November? So this idea that we have a single owner who has about five acres and they are looking to change about 17% of those five acres, this idea that we will have a better project if we make the change based on the ideas that we've laid out in the comprehensive plan, this notion has been in town for the last four months?
Correct.
And all the documents that explain this and elaborate on this, that originated from our staff, from Watertown staff, that's all online, right?
Correct.
So when we were at the planning board and we brought up these ideas and expressed this, how this would be good for Watertown, was there a public forum at the planning board?
Certainly a public meeting.
Yeah.
Absolutely, public hearing as well.
And that was four months ago?
Yep.
And two weeks ago, we did a public hearing, too, when we had this come forward. When was the information first put online?
I don't know the exact date, I'd have to go back and look, but certainly-
In the August timeframe?
At least a couple, at least a couple of weeks before that planning board meeting. And actually, probably before that, when it had a first reading before the council.
So if I'm conceptualizing this correctly, the council gets notified in the August timeframe, there is the initial public hearing and referral from the council, public hearing for the planning board. We had one again a couple of weeks ago. And then I think Counselor Donato did a great job asking the question of having you describe what comes next. And it sounds like it's a pretty elaborate process after this.
Sure.
Part of that process is requiring a developer to hold a community meeting. And I remember this was something that this council made a part of our zoning, if that sounds right. And we also amended it because we wanted to require that developers respond in writing, describing, and detailing what happened during that meeting. And then we gave community development and planning the discretion to follow up with the second meeting if it was necessary. Is that, am I correct in all that?
Yep.
So I guess, another couple of questions. Is it your position that the comprehensive plan is not out of date?
The comprehensive plan was adopted in 2015. It is a 20-year document, and it is typical for communities to revisit that on either a five- or 10-year basis. I would say it absolutely is not out of date. Is it time for us to consider updating it? No, sure, I wouldn't argue with that. You know, a lot has happened over the years, and a lot of it's been implemented, and I certainly wouldn't object to revisiting it, but I would not say it's out of date.
Thank you. When we, I remember doing the comprehensive plan, and I remember we had a whole bunch of meetings, some very well-attended, I think over 100 folks at a few of them.
200.
We received a lot of emails since the last meeting that indicated that we should do something like the following. We should have tons of public meetings that talk about land use and zoning and where we see the town moving forward. And we do that as a, with the public, with the council, with the planning department, and we do it for the whole town. And we highlight some specific areas like this one. And so, and people asked via email that we do that, that's exactly the same thing we did for the comprehensive plan, right?
Absolutely.
Awesome. I guess the other part I want to note here, something I think is important. If I was looking for this five-acre parcel here, and I wanted to know what type of development would be going in here, do you think a good first step would be to go to the zoning ordinance to say, hey, if I want to know any perimeters, I can see the setbacks, step backs, streetscape, landscaping, design guidelines, I can go in there and see what the height requirements are going to be, what the parking requirements are going to be, so I can get a vague framework of what's going to be there? Is that accurate to say?
Sure, absolutely.
And I guess part of the reason in my mind that the council doesn't vote on particular projects is always because after we establish that initial framework through our hundreds of pages of zoning and design guidelines, we leave it to the members of our planning and zoning board, who are architects and engineers, to talk about those particulars a little bit more. Is that fair to say?
Yeah, I think it's important that the council is the legislative body, and it's looking at policies from a town-wide perspective and a broader perspective and not on a project-by-project basis. I would absolutely agree with that.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Steve? Before we ask for comments, I just have a couple of comments, and I'll make some comments at the end. First of all, thank you, Steve, for your presentation this evening and answering the questions. One of the things that came up over the course of the last couple of weeks was, we heard a lot of, we didn't know anything about this. As Counselor Woodland pointed out, there have been several opportunities to hear about this, and one of the ways that we use as a town is notify me, and probably half the people in this room aren't on that. So I recognize that, and I think we, as a council, need to do a better job trying to find a way to communicate with our citizens. We created a subcommittee a couple of, two years ago, kind of with this in mind, but it seems like it fell a little bit short. So tonight, I'm going to recognize that there are people that don't get all these communications, and maybe we've got to look at a different way to do that. So I'm committing to this council and the community that we'll work together with the council to try to address this issue as we move forward. That's one thing. The other thing I've heard about is process. We've heard a lot about process, and Steve pointed out this evening that the zoning process is dictated by state law, and we've heard a lot about planning before zoning. And developers do not, developers, property owners, buy a piece of property and they make a request to the town to change the zoning. They're entitled to that, and we have to hear that. We have a process in place, and that's dictated by state law. There are possibilities that we can do a better job on this, and I agree with that. And I'm not sure what that, what we could come up with to have a better process, because we heard about planning before zoning, and it's difficult, as was explained tonight, to do planning and present a project when you don't know what's going to be allowed. One of the things that was pointed out earlier, and I didn't get a chance to finish the language for the agenda this evening, but I'm also, at the next council meeting, going to be asking for a referral to the Committee on Economic Development Planning to consider and make- and make recommendations to the need, the potential need for updating or amending the comprehensive plan and strategies to implement those potential needs for updates. So there's a couple of things that we've heard as a council that we're going to try to address as we move forward. I know it doesn't address this plan this evening, but I want to recognize the fact that we are, we are trying to listen to the needs and the concerns of the community, and we're going to try to address them. And now we'll open it up for, what's in front of us this evening is a zoning change, not the approval of any particular plan. Counselor Woodland is going to be first.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I guess what I wanted to highlight in addition to what I think was pretty clear from my cross-examination of Steve McGoon was that when members of this body speak and we publish things in the paper, and I think we owe it to folks to give a complete and accurate description of what's happening. I know that a lot of the emails that I received were the inspiration for my questions tonight. A lot of folks were under the impression that we would be able just to say no tonight, and this project would just go away. That's not what we do. A lot of folks that I heard from were under the impression that we would be approving this specific project or not approving it, and that's not the case either. There were a lot of little things like that. A couple of other things were, you know, that the comprehensive plan was out of date, or that it doesn't exist, or that this area wasn't a focus in that plan. I think it's page 16 of the plan, you know, it circles this area, and it explicitly talks about what we hope for this area and our vision for it, and it highlights offices and labs. It says it explicitly. So we were getting a lot of emails, and I'm sure I wasn't the only one that was getting them, that's why I bring it up. And I guess part of it was, and the thing that really irked me that I want to comment on more tonight, is that there was this impression that the council didn't have any idea what we were voting on. As I was alluding to in my questions with Steve, we take very careful consideration of every single piece of our zoning and our design guidelines that we have jurisdiction over. Every single project that comes forward that is in a certain area, we are able to say how tall it's going to be, where it's, roughly what it's going to look like, what kind of uses are going to be permitted. We have a very good idea of the implications of every single project that we approve. And it was said, as published online, that we don't have a baseline knowledge of what we're voting on tonight. And nothing could be further from the truth. We 100% do. And as I was mentioning with Steve, the information for folks in the community is right online. So in the community development and planning website, you can go on and see the zoning ordinance, you can see the design guidelines, you can email and talk to your counselors. This evening actually kind of reminded me of a different situation, and I won't digress too much, we'll get back to it. But a few years ago, we did BYOB, the Bring Your Own Bottle ordinance, and we were in a situation where we had, I think it was just like a committee report was being presented to the councils, it was on the council agenda. We had a couple of the restaurant owners that were very much in favor of that, because they didn't have a liquor license. They came forward at that meeting, and they spoke during public forum. And they had said pretty explicitly, we want this to pass tonight, and we want to get a BYOB license, and we hope you take that vote this evening. And so I was scribbling on a piece of paper, letting them know, hey, guys, like, that's not what we're voting on. We were just approving a committee report. And I guess regardless, even if we did approve BYOB, which we ended up doing eventually down the line, the licensing board is the granting authority, not the council. And I had come to learn that it was actually one of the counselors who had told them, no, we're voting on them tonight, and come out and talk during public forum and ask for one, and we'll give it to you, kind of thing. And, or we'll consider giving it to you. And I was, when I gave them the note, like, you know, their faces dropped. And it's because, you know, and it wasn't good faith, like, the person just had the wrong information that wasn't conveyed. It wasn't, no one did anything maliciously. But their faces dropped, and I think we have a duty as a council to give all the information, give accurate information, and to do so in a timely way. And I didn't think that was the case here. I thought we did have some information that was being published by members of the council that wasn't complete. You know, I guess, I mean, this might sound a little harsh, but when the matter was tabled last week, I kind of just said to myself, you know, unfortunately, this is just kind of another example of grandstanding, but not really the worst I've seen in this chamber. But this subsequent misinformation that a lot of the community got after, I really have to speak up about, because I think it does a lot of damage to the public discourse. Because whether intentional or not, counselors should know that every time this happens, it undermines people's faith in government. It undermines their belief that government can be a force for positive change in their lives. And honestly, it's kind of insulting to the staff and the counselors who use their time and talents to make well-informed decisions. So I wanted to bring that up tonight, express those concerns. I'll be supporting this motion. Thank you.
Counselor Pichorelli.
Thank you, Mr. President. So first, you know, I want to echo what Steve McGoon had said. Thank you, everyone, for coming. Thank you for writing. I tried to, everybody wrote to me, I responded to, except for the people who wrote today, because I haven't had a chance yet today. But I tried to explain that the rationale behind this vote tonight is to make a zoning change that will enable us to look at this area, this prize that there's four or five, six parcels, in a holistic manner. We are not voting, as I said, on a project, and this is really to rezone this, so we as a council can, and as a city, can look at it as a, as sort of a holistic way. I think we need to be realistic, that the four parcels that are currently in the limited business district on Galen Street has not been successful. So that was zoned limited business in 1937. The two conforming uses, the gas, former gas station and the former oil chain shop, have both gone out of business. The two non-conforming structures, the two-family house burned down in 2013 and is still vacant lot, and the little bungalow is now boarded up. So over the last 80 years, this has never realized the potential that was envisioned in 1937. I think we all agree a lot's changed since 1937, and it's okay to revisit things and look at something better. And certainly, having all these parcels in one contiguous zoning district gives us some flexibility to do things that we couldn't do, couldn't do otherwise. The, I want to be clear that, you know, the, even if we vote to make this zoning change for these 37,000 square feet, these four small lots, it does not give this developer permission to build anything. They still have to go through the special permit process. These have, go through both the planning board and the zoning board of appeals. And it's a long and arduous process. But the way the law works is they actually cannot make an application for this contiguous set of parcels until we actually change the zoning. Because the zoning, the law, has two different sets of criteria for the two sets of parcels. So we heard requests, we heard a request to table this for two weeks till the next meeting, so there'll be time to meet with the developer. I would say, based on what I've heard everyone speak, and there's a lot of great comments about what people made, both in writing and tonight, two weeks is not going to be enough I heard, you know, you know, and so literally, two weeks is not going to be enough time to actually have any kind of meaningful discussion. I heard a lot about, you know, the town council now has leverage. Leverage to do what? I think the true leverage the town council has is by having this all-in-one zoning district, we can help dictate a better project, both in terms of land use, massing, some opportunities for open green space, some opportunities for solving some traffic problems than we could otherwise if these were two separate parcels. And I think that, and again, understanding that, and the development team is here, that they know that they need to get through the special permit process before they build anything. And we actually don't know what they're going to build. You know, we don't know as a council. It will depend on what we do with the zoning change. If we make the zoning change, they, we, as part of the special permit process, the staff, the planning board, the zoning board, may ask them to do things to make the project better. But if the underlying zoning does not allow that, we can't ask them to do that. So coming back to the leverage question, I think the leverage we have is to make this all one common zone, which gives us the opportunity to ask them to do things that perhaps they would not be able to do otherwise. And I think this is not a big out-of-town developer just snatched up all these properties. This is somebody who's owned this property for 20 years, 51, 57, Water Street. And as the businesses or the properties around them failed, they bought up neighboring properties with the intention of actually improving their own property. So they actually have a vested interest, and they're not from, they're from out-of-town. Yes, they are. They're from Newton, as we've heard, and there's probably some Newton people here, as you know. So I honestly believe, based on the discussions we've had since August, when this first came forward, that we have an opportunity. And we heard from everybody in this room who spoke, and from everybody who wrote to us, they want to see something better. They want us to envision a better vision for this area, because if you come down off the Mass Pike, down Galen Street into Watertown Square, you're greeted by, on the right-hand side, the left-hand side's pretty good. We've got arenas, we've got, the restaurant has been restored after its fire, we've got the new 300-unit apartment complex there. But the right-hand side has always been, you know, an auto dealer was not a welcoming entry to Watertown Square, or a gas station, or an oil change plate. I think we have an opportunity here to do something that is great for the neighborhood, great for the town of Watertown, and can address some longstanding issues. The traffic in that area has been bad for a long time. In 1890, Mass Highway Department widened, you know, the traffic was so bad, they widened Galen Street from two lanes to four lanes, they replaced the Galen Street Bridge from a two-lane bridge to a five-lane bridge, and they took 11 acres of buildings by eminent domain and knocked them down and built the Rotary in Watertown Square in 1890, before people had cars. That's how bad the traffic was. So this has always been bad traffic. We can never make the traffic go away. But we can, we can, we have an opportunity to have a developer who's willing to spend their money on properties that they bought to do something that they will be proud of, and we will have input to. So I think, Mr. President, the process for them to start the special permit process by developing plans and a vision for this, and actually go through the special permit process, the first step is a community meeting, one or two community meetings two weeks before they submit to the planning board. I would think with the District Council, Feltonner and others, we could have multiple community meetings before that. And I think this type of developer who is here for the long term, they've demonstrated for the last 20 years, that they're willing to work with us to achieve a vision that we're happy with. And I honestly think that we have the opportunity to have some visioning sessions about what they believe that they can do for the property and what we want to see. Now certainly, what they've developed with the staff about some concepts, you saw all the things online at the proposals, those are just concepts. But we need to kind of work through what we really want to see as a community. And I think this is a tremendous opportunity. But we need to understand that, you know, some people may want to see housing unit there, some people may want to see office building there, some people, you know, not all of us in this room are going to agree with what we want to see at this area. But I think through the collaborative process of community members, the property owner, the staff, and the elected officials, we can come up with something here that's going to be 10 times better than what's there now. And I see this as a tremendous opportunity, which is why I said, you know, you know, I said it, I said it on January 28th, and I'll say it again now. You know, does this zoning map change support a vision contained in the master planning documents, comprehensive plan, the economic development? I think it does, yes. And will this zoning change result in a project that's better for the residents of Watertown? And I think yes. I've spent a long time looking at this. I didn't make up my mind just, you know, just yesterday. I really think that we have some structural problems in this area, and this is an opportunity that comes along once in a lifetime, where somebody's willing to spend tens of millions of dollars or more to do something that actually will benefit Watertown. So that's why I hope, I'm very optimistic, and I hope the residents who are here, who wrote and spoke, can see the bigger vision, that we have an opportunity to do something. And that's why I'm going to be supporting this change. Thank you.
Counselor Cunales.
Thank you. Well, many people in this room have said that I'm anti-development. Well, I get some yeses over there, some chuckles. Legal counsel in the room certainly know that I'm not necessarily a friend of developers and property owners who want to develop. I scrutinize very carefully. I did not support the strategic framework. I did not support the comprehensive plan. I did not support ARMUD. I did not support the Arsenal Yards project that is coming to fruition, that's going to generate five, I'm sorry, 6,000 to 10,000 vehicles per day. Did anybody care? Was anybody listening? No. Went forward. Communication after communication, I voted no. Didn't matter. My colleagues didn't support me, but at least I know I tried. A city within a city, I called it. I'm not very easy on developers. There are things that I see in this proposal that I think could actually work. This is the first step, rezoning. It's a very small portion. I think there are benefits to the I-2 versus the LB along the Galen Street corridor. It doesn't mean that when the project comes forward, I'm not going to be scrutinizing it. It doesn't mean that I'm going to support it 100%. It doesn't mean that I'm going to push everybody against the wall. It means that I will do my due diligence when the project comes forward, as I do with everything else, as I do in the East End. That's why we also have district counselors, and we have counselors at large, that district counselors live and breathe the district where they reside. I'm an East Ender. I'm not a resident of the South Side. I can't speak for you folks on a day-to-day basis. I do traverse Galen Street, I do traverse the side streets. I fully understand, but I don't reside there, just like you folks don't live in the East End, which is my home. I can tell you all the nuances of every little neighborhood. I will be supporting this zoning amendment this evening, because I think it's the right thing to do at this point in time. It's going to move the process forward. How we work with the developers as the process evolves, that's going to be a community process. That's going to be when everyone comes forward. We talk about the community meetings in the East End. I'll bring up the East Watertown Betterment Association, as some of you old-timers in the, in the neighborhood, chuckles there. We had neighborhood meetings when Nancy Scott was the zoning enforcement officer, before it was written in the zoning ordinance. That was our give-and-take in the neighborhood. We had neighborhoods. And this is what I want to see throughout the entire community, having cohesive neighborhoods. This is what it's all about, and I think it's wonderful that residents have come out this evening, residents have sent us the emails, and they want to be part of the process in what happens in their own neighborhood. Thank you.
Counselor Feltonner.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thanks to everyone here tonight. Genuine thanks. Thanks to my colleagues for all your comments and staff, and thank you to the development partners who are here and property owners, and to everyone who's not here, emailed, called, showed up for the last-minute meetings I scrambled to- showed up for the last-minute meetings I scrambled to put together. Just so my colleagues know, we had about 50 show up weeknight last minute and 30 on Saturday afternoon, which surprised me frankly. And a brief comment in how we're doing things now, you know, when agendas get posted, and I appreciate, President, your comments about communication and working on that, but there's no link to the plans on the agenda for the conceptual plans for Planning Board, just as there's no links this time for Arsenal Yards Amendment to the Building B facade. It doesn't say where you can find plans or the hours. I think that's just kind of basic. My point, though, really, is that we're, I think everyone agrees more and more that we're in a new era, a new time. Growth is continuing. I don't see this slowing down. I don't see the work of council slowing down. And we've heard a lot of word about, work about, well, we have to get into the development process before we can find out what we're getting and before we can learn about the streetscape and before we have a community meeting. And I just consider that a reactive process. Yes, there are state rules about timeframes, but there are things that we can do as other communities are doing around us, we don't have to reinvent the wheel, where you can plan before plans, specific plans are submitted. So what makes me most nervous is, yeah, it's not written into the zoning. So it's all well and good that there are references made to the Comprehensive Plan, the Strategic Plan. I went back again and looked at the documents that were given to Planning Board, slightly different ones were given to us, and there's not a single reference to the impacts of what this change means. I thought surely there must have been some impacts, but in fact, not a single one. So no acknowledgement of traffic, or that there has been a traffic study, or based on the square footage. Of course, people are concerned about traffic. Kind of a general lack of understanding that Counselor Woodland's correct, council doesn't vote on projects. So as much as we say, we, this goes into the development process, and it'll be a community process, and then we have a say on it, it's largely in the hands of staff and planning and zoning boards, and they do the best that they can with our current process. So are we giving up leverage? I think we are giving up leverage and not maybe recognizing the power that we do have and the power that we could use to get a better outcome. In fact, the Planning Board expressed more than one person concern about giving up their leverage. And Attorney York said, in speaking to that, the best leverage on that, there are nine counselors that are going to ultimately review this, which we will make commitments to, which are conceptual at this stage. So that's where we're left, and the I-2 zoning is office, lab, research, development. I consider that one use, not mixed use. Lab, office, mixed use isn't really there. They alluded to retail, but again, it's not written in the zoning. In fact, the comment was that pressed on, can you give us an idea of square footage? Maybe 5,000 to 10,000 square feet, we don't know, but it will benefit commuters and occupants of the buildings. That doesn't create synergy with the public as far as I'm concerned, and it doesn't focus on creating a vibrant streetscape. I'm not saying they're not willing to, but it's not written in the zoning. The zoning is what is binding. So we can have the best plans, the best intentions, the best good feelings, the best local developers, architects, we're all happy that they're here, that they're our current owners, the market is pushing us in one way, but it's not written in the zoning. So, you know, on the face of it, again, Comprehensive Plan, I see words transit-oriented, mixed use. As far as I know, we don't have a transit-oriented district, we don't have transit-oriented zoning. So, you know, we know this much about the project, but we know, given the location and what little we know to Counselor Woodland's point, if you can understand what setbacks, what those mean to you, et cetera, that, you know, impacts are like this. And I just wish we could be honest and at least have like an impact assessment statement from planning given to the Planning Board and Town Council, so we can at least in that way feel we're informed. We heard a lot about potential benefits, and I agree. I said all along, it's exciting, I'm glad they're here, I think it makes sense to develop it as one parcel, but I don't know why we would have these visioning sessions and community process, et cetera, after the fact, after we give up the leverage. And my goal, one of my goals, is to help council in zoning reform, and I hope where zoning not only provides a vision for these binding decisions, but maybe it gets us to a point where we don't even need mitigation. I mean, what a concept, that our zoning provides a clear vision with a fair process that minimizes impacts. We don't even need mitigation. We signal to developers, property owners, where our community is going, and it's got to be in our zoning, it can't just be in our plans, because again, that is what is A lot of our communities around us, again, are already updating their plans that they finished fairly recently, and they're looking out to 2030, they're looking out to 2040. So I know it's a lot of work, and I'll attest the fact that our staff does work really hard, and we have a small staff in all our departments across town. I'm concerned about bio labs, given the changes in our health department and the bio regulations that I just learned apparently were voted in November, but they're not online, they haven't been advanced with the state. We need to get a biosafety committee, so I hope all you who are interested pay attention. And I really just encourage you to talk to your neighbors. To Counselor Cornelius's point, Concerned Citizens Group is a neighborhood group that started in the 70s, it still exists today, used to meet once a month, I used to be president of that. We used to have monthly meetings with the zoning department, with the planning department, with the police, with the fire. I learned so much about how the town worked from my neighborhood, and I really, really appreciate that. But we don't have neighborhood councils across Watertown, so maybe that's something the residents want to encourage and, you know, talk to us, talk to the planning department. I know that some of our staff has experience in convening, community meetings, lunch bunches and things like that, but we have so much going on and so many pressures right now that this is, this is why I'm nervous, that we haven't assessed what's been done so far, we haven't updated our zoning, so it can be fair to the developers, fair to the public, fair to council, who council is not vote on projects, but Planning Board and zoning does, and most of all, fair to the residents. So thank you very much.
Counselor Donato.
Thank you, Mr. President. I stated at our last meeting, and I'm happy to reiterate it here tonight, I fully support, you know, working with Mr. Magoon to take a look at the entire zoning code and take a look at the various plans in town to see what needs to be addressed and what needs to be updated. You know, I think if we take a look at those as a whole, then we can avoid, you know, piecemeal adjustments to those. But what I think is that until we get to that point, we have to operate within the current zoning code and the current plans that were approved by previous iterations of this council. I think it's really important to note that if the developer had not requested or brought forward this zoning map amendment, it would have never come in front of the Town Council. We would have never seen it. I really appreciate the fact that they took a holistic approach to the site to try to figure out, was there something better out there? And I believe that by adopting the zoning map amendment this evening, I think the town will get a much better project due to the fact that they'll be consistent in cohesive zoning in place across the whole site. I think it's a mistake to approach this as a zero-sum game, and that if we amend the zoning map tonight, the developer wins and the town loses. I don't look at it that way. I truly believe that this can be a win-win, and that we'll end up with a much better project, and I strongly encourage people to take part in the upcoming community meetings and attend the Planning Board and attend the zoning board. You know, I can say, although those, you know, boards certainly operate within the confines of state law, those boards are made up of town citizens. You know, one complaint I often hear about, you know, various departments in town is that the employees in those departments may or may not live in Watertown. All of the members of the Planning Board and all of the members of the zoning board live in town. They are our neighbors. They truly care about the future of Watertown, and I believe that when residents come and express their concerns, I believe that those boards listen to what residents say. So I'm going to support this zoning map amendment tonight, and again, I would just encourage if, you know, whether it passes or not, you know, depending on what the developer does, we're going to go through that whole process, and I would encourage residents to get involved in the community meetings, the Planning Board meetings, and the zoning board meetings. Thank you.
Counselor Gannon.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too will be supporting the change tonight, and I come at it from a process perspective. This is only my third meeting as a town councillor, but not my first exposure to land use. I've been, I started off as a town attorney for Watertown early, for five years, early in my career. I helped evolve some of the zoning concepts that are before us tonight, that are included in the zoning ordinance. I've also served 10 years on the zoning board, and I voted no on projects, and there's a lot of process involved to get us to a final outcome. And also, as an attorney, I've sued, I've represented zoning boards, I've represented neighborhoods suing the zoning board. So I'm familiar with the process, and Watertown has a process in place. And with regard to the discussion of impact, this council doesn't vote on this project. It's conceptual, it's, you know, just on schematics, but the boards that do are the Planning Board and others have noted, zoning board. That's where the real nitty-gritty takes place of any project. I mean, it's been said that democracy is not a spectator sport, and there will be at least four opportunities, maybe even more, for public input on what will be the project. And I look at it, we're looking at potentially two community meetings, at least one meeting of the Planning Board, at least one meeting of the zoning board. And I think more notice should be given to let folks know, because there's obviously a lot of interest in this project, and that's very welcome as the process evolves. So what I can critique is the notice requirements for the zoning board and planning board. Chapter 48 of the Zoning Enabling Act requires that a butters get notices, you know, get the little green card in the mail, and a butters to a butters within 300 feet of the project. That's not a lot of notice. So I think the town can step up, giving more notice, and as other folks have noted, the community groups that used to be around when I was a young pup in land use, like the East Watertown Betterment Association, they don't exist anymore, but they alerted folks, show up at this meeting, and a lot of people were there. But we do, we seem to have, be a little too dependent upon technological notice. I mean, who signs up for every single text alert in town? It takes some time to get involved, but that's what democracy is. I think it'd be nice if there were other ways of providing more communication for these very vital neighborhood meetings, and that can be, we can increase that from a town perspective. But with regard to this particular property, we're looking at rezoning probably a fourth to a fifth of the property. As I asked Steve Magoon about, what does the I-2 give us? I mean, we talked about, he mentioned that the floor area ratio, increasing the FBR could increase more open space. So this is very much an iterative process, it's not a done deal. It actually begins the process of public input. And having served as a zoning board member for 10 years, there's a lot residents can ask. And certainly, the, given the, given the public process from this point, you've got a developer who is going to be required to put something formal on the table, you've got to have community meetings as a requirement, and there might even be iterations, reiterations of what is presented. So I urge everybody to show up at these meetings, everybody, to, that's where input is taken. And I think being on the zoning board, we're often the fourth body to take care, to consider a big plan. So some folks may get burned out going to one community meeting, I think I've done my input, they show up at the Planning Board, I've given my last input, and then the zoning board really makes the decision. Those, the zoning board meeting is an ultimately important meeting. So I urge everyone who has interest in this property to show up at all of the meetings. So with that, as I said, I will support the project, and I look forward to the public process just beginning. Thanks.
Are there any other comments? Counselor Palomba.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I do have a little lengthy thing here, so I'm going to ask for your patience with me. I did want to say just before I begin that I want to appreciate Counselor Feltonner for what she did last week. I don't consider that a grandstanding move. I consider that she took a principled position on something and put it out to us as counselors. She used a tool that we have as counselors, and I think the result of her effort is seen right here. The fact that there's this many people interested in the issue is a credit to her. Secondly, I want to appreciate Counselor, Counselor President's issue around communication, and he mentioned that we had, I was the chair of, and I work with Counselor Feltonner and Counselor Bates on this committee, trying to increase ways, thinking of ways to increase communication in town, and I think we did an okay job, and I think we could do better, we could have done better, but I think we did all right. We came up with some good ideas, and now the question is implementation. But I don't want people to feel like it was your responsibility to understand zoning, or your responsibility to keep up with every piece of what happens in Watertown. And I think that some of the questions from some of my colleagues sort of put the onus on you. Now, do you have a responsibility as residents to try to keep up with things? Yes. But I don't expect people to be up on everything. I just recently sent an email to a colleague asking him about a project I didn't even know about, and I saw it in the permits, and they were asking to do renovations of close to $5 million, and I'm saying, what are they renovating for $5 million? And I didn't even know where, what it was, and I'm supposed to try to keep up with this. You're not. So I want, I do think it's important, and we got to work on how to communicate better, how to give people information, but at the same time, and you have to do the same, this is a back-and-forth, and that has to happen. So my, I just want to make those, a comment of kudos to Counselor Feltonner, and also to mention that communication is a two-way street, and we got to try to find ways to improve that. Let me just say first off that I don't know if this is an opportunity that voting on this would be an opportunity for us to come into a large, a big process. I do want to say that voting, that this, we're giving the developers an opportunity. That's what this is about. I mean, the developers are here because they want to develop property, they wouldn't put in this kind of money or time if they didn't think there was going to be an outcome that benefited them. So I did want to be clear about that. So I did want to be clear about that. Can that outcome benefit all of us? Maybe. But let's be clear that we come at this from, let's be honest about how we come at this. Okay? So now, let me just say upfront, I'm going to be voting for this, the change, for the amendment. But I did want to say that this whole discussion has raised some larger issues, and I do want to credit you already. I have these three things written down here, and some of my colleagues have already mentioned them. One of them is that we do need to look at our zoning code to see how it fits with other issues that we're addressing, like energy assessments and our climate challenge and transportation issues, right? I've heard two counselors say that already. They would not, I don't know if we would have said that without you being here tonight. I put down, where, should we have a master plan for Watertown? Yes, we should have a master plan for Watertown, right? I'm not sure that would have been brought up about a master plan for Watertown without you being here. The third thing is, is it time to revisit the comprehensive plan? Counsel President Sideris immediately jumped on this and is going to have a referral to the economic development, economic and, I'm sorry, to the committee to discuss this. Yes, it is time. Five years have passed. It's time to take a look at that plan. You know, so much has happened in five years. We are now, what, the new Mecca for life science. Isn't it time that we take a look at, have we, maybe we've achieved what we said, and maybe it's time to consider slowing down? But we're not going to do that unless we look at the comprehensive plan. So I just want to credit you and your energy for pushing us to actually think about doing some of the things that we are going to do as Counsel President Sideris is suggesting. So now, I do think that though this is a good plan. I do have read over the proposal from, and I met with the folks at BDG, Boston Development Group. I do think two life science buildings on that property with retail on Galen Street is a good idea. I do like the fact that they're eliminating a lot of the curb cuts and making that place more, that whole area more pedestrian-friendly. I like the fact that we're going to get a mini park out of this situation if that And I do think that it might be helpful that to redirect Water Street and put a signal there. I mean, I think those are all positive things. Maybe they're not, I'm not, I mean, I think they might be positive things. I also want to talk about mitigation. I do think that the planning board and the zoning board have, in their conditions, put in mitigation for developers to meet. I also want to appreciate the fact that I have asked for and I have had agreement with the developers for a $500,000 commitment to affordable housing trust, if we ever get one established, which I think we might get one established in Watertown. So I think that's a very important mitigation. But all this, to say, comes down to the question of trust, for me, comes down to the question of trust. Can we trust BDG that they are listening tonight? Can we trust that they will take the information they hear? And when they come back with a more formal proposal, will they come back with one that addresses the issue of traffic, that addresses the issue of massing, that addresses the issue of lighting, and a number of other questions, right? Can we trust that our zoning board and ZBA, our ZBA and planning board will listen carefully to your concerns and put in conditions on that development? Can we trust that, well, that's, I'm sorry, excuse me? And I don't have answers to those questions. And I know there are people in this audience who say, no, you can't trust. You can't trust the process. They've been hurt by that process. They feel like they've been abused by that process. And then there's other people in the audience who said, well, maybe this process can work. Maybe it can work. Four possible opportunities for community input. My guess is whatever proposal may not go by the planning board in one meeting, it may be two meetings, there may be five possibilities for input. I think we need to give this an opportunity, this a chance. That's why I'm supporting the amendment on the zoning. But I also think it puts pressure on Boston Development Group to come forward with a proposal that you, because of you and because of you being here, because of the emails we received, because of the calls we received, puts the onus on them to come forward with a proposal that addresses concerns. And I think it is on them that they listen carefully tonight, and they come forward with a proposal that answers some of your questions and some of your concerns. And let me make one final, so I know I'm disappointing some of my supporters, I have many supporters in this room who have been very supportive of me and were assuming that I would oppose this. I don't think a two-week delay is going to make any difference. Actually, I am anxious to get them going on this proposal because I'd like to see what they actually come up with and how closely it mirrors what they have proposed so far. So I don't think a two-week delay is appropriate. And let me just end by one thing. Many, many years ago, when I started on this council, and this is a little, I suggested to the planning board, I mean, to the Department of Community Development Planning, why won't you do a couple of, three times a year, why don't you hold a planning 101? And I suggested to the assessor three times, I said, why don't you do three times a year, do an assessing 101 and learn about property tax and abatements, right? We don't do that. And some of the things that came out of our committee was that maybe there's some things like that should happen. It is our responsibility as a council and as a government to try to inform people, to keep them abreast of what happens, to have them understand what a town government, how it operates. I'm hoping, and I know Counsel President Sideris is on this, I'm hoping that we could use the charter review process as one of the ways to, for you to understand how our town works and what role you have in making it work. So again, I know I'm disappointing some people, but I do think it's time that we move this project, this forward. I look forward to working with the developers, I look forward to seeing what they bring forward to us. I thank you all for being here, and I hope that you will continue to be in the process. There'll be plenty of time for us to continue this. Thank you very much.
Counselor Baze, did you have?
I have a few, similar to Counselor Palomba, actually. I actually have found the last two weeks that we've had to talk to everybody and learn what your concerns are really enlightening and really informative. And I think there are some serious concerns out there. But the vast majority of the concerns I heard had nothing to do with this project. It hasn't changed my mind about how I'm going to vote. I did, I did do my homework. I think everybody here really did our homework. Most of us were at the planning board meeting where this was presented. We've known about it for months. We've been asking questions, talking to people. I mean, I've memorized that plot, you know, I know every, I've walked around it. We've done our homework. And in my mind, and it sounds like in pretty much everybody else's mind, this was a good move for us and for the town. But what was revealed over the last two weeks was that we have some serious issues around communication, process, and planning. And I'm hoping that because we've uncovered this, because we kind of, this has been brought to the fore in the way that it has, that we can start to address those issues. We're on a moving train right now, and I'm not sure that we can address those issues in the amount of time we have for this, this particular proposal. But I think that we can start to address some of these issues in the future. And I've already talked to President Sideris about addressing some of these issues around process, planning, and communication. So I will be voting for this, but I do understand that there are a lot of concerns out there, and I think they're valid concerns.
Thank you. I'm going to close this part of the meeting. I have some, a couple of things to say. First of all, I want to thank everybody that reached out to, not only myself, everybody on this council. I've done my best, and I'm sure everybody here has, to communicate back, maybe this afternoon or this morning. We didn't catch the rest of them, but we will get a response back. I want to thank you all, and I know most of you went to the couple of meetings that Lisa had. I think you're recognizing this evening that your voices were heard and are being heard, except you're not going to like what we have to say because you see, they already have the votes. The votes are already there to pass the zoning amendment. I too am going to support this zoning amendment because I feel that this is going to give us an opportunity to develop an underutilized section of Galen Street. I kind of call it a blighted section of Galen Street because there are some properties there that are not very well-maintained or taken care of. I do have some concerns where Counselor Palomba raises the fact that they've made a commitment to some housing, and I don't think that that's appropriate or true at this point. So I want to get that out there because I do think that they have to go through this process before they make any commitments. And I'm sure that I'm getting some looks here that we do have to have some discussions about that with the staff. What we see as conceptual plans for this offer some great and unique opportunities for this area. One of the things we're not going to fix is the traffic on Galen Street. That's for sure. Whether this property gets developed or not, we're still not going to fix it. That's going to be there for all of our lifetimes, and if it's not, then I'm not seeing what's going on. I will say that a lot of issues have been raised, and I think you see this evening that we're trying to address them, and we will continue to address them. It's going to take some time. Going through the comprehensive plan and all the other documents, zoning ordinance and things like that, they don't get done overnight. So we're going to be working together as a council and with any member of the community and the staff to try to address all of those issues. I am going to also state that, as has been stated before, there are many, many meetings to come. I did request and have gotten commitments from the owners to have as many community meetings as necessary. And I've also gotten commitments, we're going to do things a different way this time. We're going to mail a postcard to everybody on the south side to tell them when the first community is going, community meeting is going to be. We're not going to call, we're not going to use notify me. We will use that, that'll be one tool, but we're going to go one step further on this one. And if they've agreed to do that, and if they don't do it, I'll make sure it's going to happen with my own money if I have to. Because I think it's important that everybody that lives at least on that side of the street gets more than the typical notification. So I know everybody in this room is going to hate what we're doing here this evening, but I think it's a step, and it's a step in the process that allows us to, I think, get a first-class building here and a project here that the property owners have, are going to be proposing. And I think keeping and maintaining is that they're part of their family business. And they've, they're, they've had the property on the other side of Water Street for over 20 years. So they have some roots in this community, even though they may not live yet. So again, you've heard all of our comments, and again, thank you to Counselor Felton for having had a couple of meetings and raised some issues that we are attempting to address. I will take now a roll call on this matter.
Counselor Palomba?
No. No, I'm sorry. I apologize. I had to get straight on what I'm voting.
Do we need to read the motion?
Yes, thank you.
Counselor Pichorelli?
Yes.
Counselor Woodland?
Yes.
Counselor Baze?
Yes.
Counselor Donato?
Yes.
Counselor Felton?
No.
Counselor Gannon?
Yes.
Counselor Canelas?
Yes.
President Sideris?
Yes, thank you. We're going to take a two-minute recess. I need some water.
Amendment proposed where we wanted to make clear that if there was not just minor removal of ledge, but if there was a situation where a developer was needed to use heavy equipment in order to jackhammer and remove ledge, that there be some outreach to the surrounding neighbors, have a conversation about that, and create some standards for both that process, and then the communication would follow up afterwards. The planning board followed up with a public hearing, and again, discussion about that. One of the concerns expressed at the planning board was that it didn't include any discussion about what would happen after the community meeting and how that would be documented. So they recommended approval to the council with some additional language regarding that follow-up. So the amendment as written now would be amend section eight, which is regulation of soil removal by adding or ledge, and then adding a paragraph, "If ledge is to be removed when incidental to and in connection with a by right project using a vehicle-mounted hydraulic jackhammer or rock breaker, then a community meeting in accordance with Watertown's zoning ordinance section nine point oh three will be held prior to any such removal to discuss the extent of the removal, methods to be utilized, the timing and duration of such work. The meeting will then be followed up by a letter to a butters with the agreed-upon process unless the removal is determined by the director of the Department of Community Development and Planning in writing to be less than a significant quantity."
Thank you. This is also a public hearing. Is there any member of the public that wish to be heard on this resolution? Seeing none, can I get a motion?
Mr. President, I make a motion that we amend section eight point zero of the zoning ordinance to add new language regulating the removal of ledge when performed by a vehicle-mounted hydraulic jackhammer.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. Counselor Woodland.
I have a couple of questions on this. So Steve, in your, besides the incidents that inspired this language, in your tenure in Watertown, can you recall a single other incident where removal of ledge has caused a noise nuisance?
Generally, I would say no. There have been some instances where disturbance of bedrock has resulted in some vibrations and those types of things in surrounding neighborhoods where we have gotten some concerns expressed about that, but certainly not to this level.
Okay. And I guess as a follow-up, if I may, do you interpret the language, that comma before unless, to mean that a community meeting isn't always required if community development and planning deems it less than a significant quantity? Or is that unless referring specifically to the follow-up letter? Because it was the committee's desire to have it apply to the meeting in general?
Yeah, I would read that to mean that if there is that work to be done, the community meeting is required, and that that would be, happen unless I had determined that it was very minor in nature.
Okay. Could you give an example of a minor situation?
I guess I would describe that, in my mind, as very minor. In the case where I would say anything larger than, and I'm not sure I want to give a specific measurement, but anything significant that would take any duration of time. I think the biggest issue with this particular case was it took place over an extended period of time. So it wasn't like the kind of thing where, you know, a dump truck comes in and is loaded with rock and noise and, you know, slamming gates, and it's over in a day, and, you know, okay, well, that was obnoxious, but it's over. This was something that went on for a couple of weeks. So I would think if it is something, I wouldn't deem it to be minor and not needing this unless it was something that could be done very quickly and pretty minor, you know, a day or two at most. If it's going to be anything more substantial than that, I would think it would require...
Counselor Canelis, and then Counselor Palomba.
Thank you. Just to clarify, the location that precipitated this was actually on Salisbury Road. I'm sure we all recall the issues associated. And I actually reside about four blocks away and could hear the noise of the impact, never mind the butters that were on top of the ledge, and there was possible encroachment. That was another issue. And the days turned into weeks, and the weeks turned into a month, and it was just utter chaos in the neighborhood. And I don't know whether there actually has been subsequent conversation with the folks on top of the ledge as to what's going to materialize. But I think this is the appropriate way to go, and we need to tread cautiously when issues of this nature do materialize. And it was actually when our dear friend, Tim Thompson, the building inspector, passed away, and there was communication that had actually fallen through the cracks, and there was no neighborhood meeting that had been promised. So I hope that this is going to actually help our neighbors with anything that materializes in the future. So thank you.
Counselor Palomba.
Thank you. I just want to go back to Counselor Woodland's point about the comma. I'm sorry, Steve, but the way I would read this, and maybe it's me, it says, in blue, the part that I think must have been added by the planning board, was it the planning board or the CP, the planning board. "The meeting will then be followed by a letter to butters with the agreed-upon process unless the removal is determined." It seems to me that refers to the letter, not the meeting. And if that was the intent, I thought, I think we need to just change... I am not an English major, but the way I would read that, it reads to me that the letter's not necessary.
As Gideon indicated, I think the intent was, as I stated it, you're correct, you could read it, that the way this sentence is structured, that that would only apply to the letter, but that was intended to...
But that's not the intent. You want it to apply to the meeting, right?
Correct.
Yeah, the issue was that it was a one really long sentence, and so they added that blue in the middle, and so that made it very long, so it got broken up into two seconds. They're suggesting that it means it's unclear, so the unless was tied to that. So if you put the blue after that, then it would clarify that.
Okay, just to be clear, and I just had a question. If I think, remember this, I was at Counselor Canelis, and it was in her neighborhood. But I believe it was Counselor Falkoff who suggested this. And can you just remind me of the steps that were taken? Did she make that as a request for information, or did she come to you directly and say, "I think we need an amendment to address this problem"? Asking your memory here, I don't know.
It was a referral to committee.
Oh, it was a referral to committee? That's it? Okay. That's it? Thank you.
Are there any other comments? Counselor Gannon?
Thank you, Mr. President. One issue I have is whether the ordinance goes far enough. I mean, I've worked with other communities where developers have used explosives to remove ledge and other issues like that. Does that happen in Watertown? Has it ever happened in Watertown? Is there...
No.
Is there any prevention of using explosives for removing ledge?
I think the process for using explosives to remove ledge is much more involved permitting process, involves the fire department as well as the building department. This was intended because, again, it refers to by right project, using a vehicle-mounted hydraulic jackhammer. So it was intended to be a situation that was only involving a by right building permit, not that more involved process of explosives, which again involves the fire department and other entities.
So would there be already a state process if that were the issue?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions? Can I get a roll call, please?
And just to clarify, could I just make sure, Mr. President? I'm sorry, but just clarifies, we'll take the blue language and add it to the end of the sentence so that it'll read correctly.
Yeah.
That's what I was gonna...
Okay.
I was like, we have to move this, we have to make sure it's clear.
So for the record, we will take that blue, part of the sentence that says, "The meeting will then be followed by a letter to a butters with the agreed-upon process," and move that to the end of that sentence. Is that what...
As a new sentence.
Sorry, as a new sentence.
Thank you.
Mr. President, if I may, I would recommend that an actual motion be made to that effect so that it's clear in the record what the council's actually...
So I'm making that motion that we move that phrase, "The meeting will then be followed by a letter to a butters with the agreed-upon process," and take that, move it to the end of the paragraph as a new sentence.
And could you read the entire...
So...
I'm sorry, I just think that would be...
Okay, so I will, maybe it'd be easier to just withdraw my original motion, make a new motion that says we had adopted...
Okay, withdraw.
So I'll withdraw my original motion.
So who would...
Second.
Okay, I will make a new motion that we amend section eight point zero to add new language regulating the removal of ledge when performed by a vehicle-mounted hydraulic hammer with the language to read, quote, "If the ledge is to be removed when incidental to and in connection with a by right project using a vehicle-mounted hydraulic jackhammer or rock breaker, then a community meeting in accordance with the Watertown zoning ordinance section nine point oh three will be held prior to any removal to discuss the extent of the removal, methods to be utilized, and the timing and duration of such work." Period. Unless the removal, comma, "Unless the removal is determined by the director of community development and planning in writing to be less than a significant quantity." Period. A new sentence would start, "The meeting will then be followed by a letter to a butters with the agreed-upon process." Period.
Okay, second.
This is a second? Okay. Counselor Woodland.
So this is, yeah, we're not voting on, because we're not voting on that as a new motion. Steve, am I wrong in thinking that the reason I voted against this on the council level in the committee was because it was indicated that if I, as a homeowner, was going to remove ledge by right from my property, that I'd already be going to the, there's already a requirement that I go to the building inspector, and that the building inspector could, if it was significant, put additional requirements upon when I could do that, and the steps I'd have to take to maintain, you know, safety and some level of, you know, compliance within any other ordinances?
Well, I can't speak to why you voted against it, but if you're asking me if that was the case...
It sounds right.
Certainly, the building inspector does have some discretion. I think the intent of the amendment was just to make it clear in writing in the ordinance that in this case, we would require a community meeting.
In my example, it would be possible that if I was trying to remove ledge with a vehicle-mounted hydraulic jackhammer, that the building inspector would take another look at that and say, you know, you have to make sure you follow certain parameters.
Certainly could.
Thank you.
Well, follow up that comment. I know if I were a neighbor with a property having a vehicle-mounted hydraulic jackhammer, I'd like to be noticed and have the input, because one thing, I'd be taking pictures of the foundation of my property before any drilling takes place. So I like the way the motion is, the proposed ordinance is framed.
Are there any other comments? Roll call, please.
Counselor Woodland?
No.
Mr. Baze?
Yes.
Counselor Donato?
Yes.
Counselor Feltonner?
Yes.
Counselor Gannon?
Yes.
Counselor Canelis?
Yes.
Counselor Palomba?
Yes.
Counselor Petrelli?
Yes.
President Sedaris?
Yes, thank you. Seven D is also a public hearing in action on a resolution adopting an amendment to the Watertown zoning ordinance by amending section four point oh three accessory uses and other changes to the Watertown zoning ordinance as needed, so as to clarify the dimensional and other requirements for accessory buildings and structures. I'm going to recognize Gideon.
Yes, thank you. This was a zoning amendment that was recommended to be developed by the Department of Community Development and Planning, by the town council to provide that clarification and clarifying language. The planning board report identifies four areas that staff had recommended, and then an additional area of change within the accessory structures and uses section for residential projects. One was a limitation on the total length of any facade of up to no more than 30 feet. There's also other limitations within zoning that would potentially make a structure be substantially less than 30 feet in any length, but that's a maximum length that would be incorporated into the zoning amendment. Number two is limiting the height to 12 feet for exterior walls of an accessory structure in all instances. And then a pitched roof could be allowed at the top plate of that wall. So currently, that's not the way that the zoning language is written. And number three, limiting the use of the attic space by requiring the floor area to comply with the half-story requirements. So it is a one-story structure, and if someone wants to put in some type of floor plate above, it would be only used for attic space, and by following the guideline in a peaked roof, that would limit that type of area. And then the last component that staff had recommended initially was separating the commercial accessory structures from the residential structures, and this needed to be done in order to allow the amendment to move forward. So that's just a cleanup of creating a new section for accessory commercial structures, which are different than residential. At the, the planning board's recommendation is incredibly difficult to describe in words. So I tried to, what I wrote, what they came out of the bullet with doesn't make sense, but they basically wanted to further limit the maximum height near the side and rear property line by not allowing buildings to be taller than 12 feet at that five-foot setback, and then creating a plane at a 45-degree angle in which the building would have to fit within, as it moves into the property. It's difficult to visualize, but that is what they recommended, and we drafted language based on the recommendation that says, extend the above plane, no, it's the extend above the plane created by using a one-to-one ratio, which is a 45-degree angle, with the plane starting at a line located five feet from any property line and at a height of 12 feet extending up and into the property. So that's the words of describing that it's creating a plane where the building can't go above that area within those five, within five feet and going up to the end, you know, goes in perpetuity, but 18 feet is the maximum peak of a roof. So that, in summary, is the zoning amendment. The attached amendment, I'm not going to read through the changes, the blue were clarifying components that the planning board just wanted to confirm. And so one of those pieces speaks to the gable ends, because a question came up at the zoning board, that the gable ends of a wall are not considered part of the wall. So the wall comes up to 12 feet, the gable, which is the triangle, is not part of that, and it can be above that to terminate at up to 18 feet. So, sorry for the convoluted description of this particular amendment. If you have any questions, I'm available. Thank you.
This is also a public hearing. If any member of the public wished to be heard on this?
It's hard to understand.
This came out of the Moore Street garage issue?
Yeah.
Seeing none, I close the public hearing and ask for a motion from the council.
Mr. President, I make a motion that we amend section four point oh three of the zoning ordinance, accessory uses and other changes to the zoning ordinance as needed to clarify the dimensional and other requirements for accessory buildings and structures as amended by the planning board.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. Counselor Baze?
So I have a question about the fact that the commercial buildings don't have to, what happens when a commercial, you know, when the commercial butts up against residential in those places where, like, they follow the commercial, but it's still the residential...
So this was specifically about amending the residential accessory buildings?
Right.
Commercial accessory buildings also include accessory parking garages under the ground. It is a convoluted and completely different piece. Our ordinance has always had them in the exact same section, and in fact, in the same sentence, and it made it very difficult to understand, because you'd be reading the first three sentences, and it's about your garage, and then it goes into this, but on the other hand, if, you know, 30% of it is this and that and other. So we took that language and separated it, but this is not an amendment in any way about accessory commercial structures. The language that's in red for the commercial structures was up above and got repeated and brought down, and it just is creating a new section so that they are now separate sections. So this is really about only the discussion, the legal language, everything is about the accessory residential structures. And this is for the smaller residential projects, not the large.
Right. No, no, I get that, but what I'm saying is, so if you're a residential up against commercial, you can have, you know, a big gigantic thing up near you that's...
So commercial parking garages and other types of commercial development have their own buffers and restrictions, and it's not within this section of the ordinance?
Okay. But that's what I'm wondering, what you can have.
And it's not, and this, I don't want to get into that here, because this is an amendment about...
Okay. I was just wondering.
The residential structures.
Counselor Donato?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a question on the additional language proposed by the planning board. The planning board is made up of, I think, all engineers or architects. So when an engineer or architect is reviewing our zoning to make sure they know what's allowed for an accessory use, this language is going to be very familiar to them.
Before we finalized this language, we did have the zoning enforcement officer take a look at it. So that's a way for us to test it and see if it works. It is complicated, so some people will not get it correct the first time, but we will have some type of a, most likely, like with other things that we have, like half stories, we'll have some kind of a guide to show it, because the plane, when you draw it, is pretty straightforward.
I understand, you know, for laypeople like myself, this doesn't make much sense, but somebody who's involved in this type of business, it shouldn't be overly complicated for them. For a regular homeowner like myself, yes, completely difficult to understand. Architect, engineer.
Although, although a lot of times, people are trying to do their own ideas, you know, they're not necessarily getting a lot of professional help when they're looking at an accessory structure at their house. So that's why we would, I would imagine, create a sketch drawing to show people what the limitation would be.
Thank you.
Counselor Feltonner?
Thank you, Mr. President. Kind of two questions. Well, one is a comment, yeah, when I was at the planning board meeting and the discussion, it was interesting, and a lot of back and forth. I thought there was going to be a drawing included to help explain that. I know that was discussed at the meeting. I guess my question is, given that we have older buildings that are, garages that are being used as residential properties, could you speak to that, if there is any concern? I don't think they would necessarily be grandfathered, because it wasn't a, like, do you see any pitfalls with this, given some of our older housing stock and existing uses in town, whether they're legal or not, and if someone wanted to come forward and make them legal, how it might be handled?
An existing, and so this is about existing accessory structures. An existing accessory structure that is larger or taller, that is not compliant with this, will become non-conforming and would be allowed to remain. And if something happens to that, that's a natural disaster, they would be allowed to rebuild it. If they tore it down on purpose, or if they tore it down without a permit, or it just got removed, then they would not be able to rebuild that size structure if it was non-compliant, either from a height perspective. So if you have a roof that is a gambrel roof, that is one and a half stories above your first floor, you would not be able to rebuild that if it went away, unless it was through that non-conforming clause of our ordinance. Does that answer the question? And I did sketch out the drawing, but I never turned it into a real graphic.
So I guess you answered my question by saying you don't see any negative impact or inhibiting residential use that's already happening, or if somebody wanted to rebuild what's exactly there, as long as it was a natural disaster, or...
This is just creating one more potential non-conformity for a lot of the residential project sites that have garages or other types of accessory structures today. It's not creating, it's not taking it away, it's not taking the right of someone to have something they already have, it's removing the ability to build something in the future. And to be clear, it's very uncommon for us to be looking at accessory structures on properties, because there's so many different rules and setbacks and limitations that we rarely see new accessory structures, and certainly not ones that are this large. So you have to have a, you have to have a larger lot, and you have to have a building that doesn't exceed your building coverage today, and a lot of Watertown already does.
And lastly, I think probably this is more for the town attorney, I wonder just your opinion on, these are so, so many months old, the, both the, sorry, see, the mounted hydraulic jackhammer in this one. Can you explain how that, you know, it's outside of the 90-day timeframe, is there more leeway when it's a request for council to make a zoning amendment, or...
If I may, Mr. President, zoning is essentially a two-part process. There's the planning board public hearing and report and recommendation. There is timing within which the planning board has to deliver its report. Then the town council, acting as a city council, would undertake its process, and then the 90 days from that hearing for the conclusion of your action. So in terms of a gap between when the planning board heard it, when it was then returned to the council, as long as the council meets its 90 days, it hasn't gone stale, so to speak. So you can consider it at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Can I get a roll call, please?
Counselor Baze?
Yes.
Counselor Donato?
Yes.
Counselor Feltonner?
Yes.
Counselor Gannon?
Yes.
Counselor Canelis?
Yes.
Counselor Palomba?
Yes.
Counselor Petrelli?
Yes.
Counselor Woodland?
Yes.
President Sedaris?
Yes, thank you. Item number eight is motions, orders, and resolutions, and eight A is first reading on a proposed loan order authorizing the town treasurer with the approval of the town manager to borrow and or expend monies in the amount of $2,500,000 under chapter forty-four, section seven one of the general laws, or any other enabling authority to pay costs of constructing, reconstructing, paving, repairing, or otherwise improving streets and sidewalks. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the council, as you just indicated, Mr. President, tonight's the first reading. There'll be a full, there'll be an advertisement and a full public hearing and presentation before town council. But just by way of background, this is related to one of the conceptual recommendations that town council adopted last March for the fiscal year 20 to 24 capital improvement program, specifically reads in part, refer to the Public Works Committee, the Policy Guidance, plans for the fiscal year for local road construction projects in the summer of 2020. Subsequent to that conceptual recommendation, the town council in September adopted, approved the list of streets to be included. Again, Mr. President, there'll be the full public hearing and presentation two weeks from tonight at the February 25 meeting. This is a first reading, Mr. President.
Thank you. Committee reports, committee on economic development and planning report regarding confirmations to the historic district commission. Counselor Woodland?
Thank you, Mr. President. The committee convened on Tuesday, Feb. 4, 2020, at 5:30 in the town council office, President, myself, Chair Lisa Feltonner, Vice Chair Vince Petrelli, Secretary. Purpose of the meeting was to conduct interviews for the historic district commission. Robert Bloomberg is seeking appointment to the historic district commission, trained as a historian. He has authored many articles, including a recent column for the Historical Society of Watertown's newsletter on the Schick family and their dairy farm on Grove Street. He believes it is important to not only preserve historic buildings, but also the historic landscapes surrounding them. Counselor Petrelli made a motion, seconded by Counselor Feltonner, to recommend the town council confirm Robert Bloomberg for appointment to the historic district commission for a term to expire November 15, 2020. Unanimously voted. Harvey Steiner is an artist who lives in the district and has served on the commission since its creation in 2003, and is seeking the appointment. He serves as chair and discusses past successes of the commission. He has worked with the planning department and the DPW to design the signs identifying the district, in hopes they will be installed as part of the Mount Auburn Street project. The action item, Counselor Petrelli made a motion, seconded by Counselor Feltonner, to recommend the town council confirm Harvey Steiner for reappointment to the historic district commission for a term to expire November 15, 2022. Also voted unanimously. The meeting adjourned at 6:20 PM, prepared by Counselor Petrelli.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to accept the report? Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Do you have... Opposed? The ayes have it. Action item number one, the council confirm Robert Bloomberg for appointment to the Historic District Commission for a term to expire on November 15, 2020. So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Second action item, the council confirm Harvey Steiner for reappointment to the Historic District Commission for a term to expire on November 15, 2022. So moved. Is there a second?
Second, second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item number 10 is new business and there's two referrals and I will state that these were brought forward by Counselor Woodland and according to the current town council rules, there was an email request for response from the Public Works Department and according to Counsel Woodland, and I verified after 21 days, there was no response. So this automatically gets on the agenda. This rule may be changing in our new council rules. So the first item is to refer to the Committee on Public Works to consider participating in the simple recycling or alike program. So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. Counselor Cornelis.
Thank you. So this is something that we as a town council are not aware of. I haven't seen any email. I'm sure you've authenticated it. Would the counselor be receptive to submitting a request for information that we would all be privy to?
Counselor Woodland?
The process is the process because there was no response within 21 days. I'm happy to give you the gist of the program if you want a, a quick background on it.
Well, I'm disappointed there was no response.
Same.
Counselor Feltner?
Oh, thank you, Mr. President. Actually, I think we overlapped because there was a, I met a woman at the MMA and I shared it with the rest of the council who happens, she happens to be Watertown resident, this company that does simple recycling, free program, et cetera. So just for informational purposes, it'll be in your email about that program, but I support the referral and looking forward to hearing from DPW.
Are there any other comments?
Sorry.
Counselor Woodland?
I'd be remiss if I didn't mention that this was brought forward by a resident over in the, the West End near Waltham Street a few months back that introduced me to the program and the different communities that are doing it. Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. The second referral is a referral to the Committee on Public Works to consider conducting a recycling survey with the public services. So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Communications from the town manager, submission of the proposed fiscal year 2021 to 25 capital improvement program, which was submitted to the council last Tuesday. Mr. Manager.
Yeah, thank you. Well, Mr. President, again, I'm not going to go, so then last year would not go through the 16 pages of documents and then certainly providing kind of a 50,000 feet above a view of the five-year capital improvement program. The proposed fiscal year 2021 to 2025 general fund capital improvement program totals $459,730,500. That's actually a decrease of $43.3 million from the current fiscal year 20 to 24 CIP. Within that, 459.7, there is school facilities, renovation, reconstruction of school facilities totaling $295 million, which is made up of the three elementary school project for $95 million and the high school and related costs for $200 million. The bonding requirement within the five-year capital improvement program is $151.6 million. Jumping all the way to a page on the document that was submitted to the school capital projects, the fiscal year 2021 to 2025, CIP includes funding of $319.3 million, again, mostly related to the two, the three elementary school project and $95 million in the high school and related costs for $200 million. Very briefly speaking on the three elementary school projects, as you recall, Mr. President, members of the council, the school building committee, a little over a year ago, had voted, endorsed a conceptual and schematic design, which includes an all-new construction of the Hosmer and Coniff schools and a comprehensive renovations in additions to the Lowell School. As you recall, that conceptual and schematic design plan was totaled, the funding for that was $170 million. That was included in the fiscal year 20 to 24 capital improvement program as well as within the fiscal year 20 budget that was submitted on April 23. And it should be noted, all of this project for the three elementary schools totaling $170 million is to be, be done within the confines of Proposition 2 and 1/2. When we submitted the budget in April, the planned borrowing for the $170 million was for fiscal year 20, the year we're in now, was going to be $35 million and then $45 million in fiscal year 21, 22, 23. The school building committee has been working with AI3 Architects on the various phases for the three elementary school project. One of the items on page 11, and certainly was been reported on the media, after significant discussions with the school committee, the school building committee and the town council, the town will be leasing St. Jude School in Waltham beginning on July 1 through June 30 of 2023 for swing space for the three elementary school project. This is, decision will allow the Coniff and Lowell schools to be completed two years earlier than originally projected. Construction will begin at the Coniff and Hosmer during this summer and the Coniff School will be completed by the end of calendar year 2021 and the Hosmer School will be completed by the summer of 2022. And then construction will begin at the Lowell School during the summer of 2022 and be completed by the end of calendar year 2023. As a result of the decision to lease St. Jude's and acceleration of the Coniff and Lowell School project with completion dates two years earlier than originally projected, we'll be changing the revised timeline for the borrowing of the $170 million. As you, I just mentioned, in fiscal year 20, the one we're in now, we were thinking of borrowing $35 million. We will now go out and borrow $75 million. Obviously, council will need to vote on loan, loan authorizations of that. And then in fiscal year 22 and 23, we'll be borrowing $60 million and $35 million respectfully. With respect to the high school, the school building committee is working with AI3 Architects on the various phases, the three phases, feasibility and schematic process. The preliminary design program will be submitted by the end of this month, subsequent to moving the second, to the second step, which is preferred schematic study and report. And then the last step, and this is all driven by MSBA guidelines and rules, would be the schematic design, that the submission date for that would be in March of 2021. After completion of all the phases related to the feasibility and schematic process, the town would then be looking to seeking a debt exclusion vote in calendar year 2021. The Town Council Budget Policy Guideline 20, 2021 Budget Policy Guideline 2B reads as follows, continue to support the building for the future initiatives, collaboration with the school building committee for the three elementary school project of the MSBA high school project, with proposed debt exclusion funding in conjunction with the outreach efforts by the community, by school committee. As a follow-up to the second part of their budget policy guideline, $200 million has been included in the fiscal year 2021 to 25 capital improvement program for the high school and related costs, with the funding source of the proposed debt, of a proposed debt exclusion and a, and a MSBA grant. Just briefly on the street and sidewalks, within the tw- five-year capital improvement program, there's 101, 101.5 million dollars is designated for street and sidewalk improvements. There are five future loan orders within the fiscal year 21 to 25 capital improvement program. In summary, Mr. President, beginning in fiscal year 2013 and continuing through 2025, the Honorable Town Council has or will be planning on authorizing loan authorization for street and sidewalk improvements totaling $47,900,000 over 13 fiscal years, all within the confines of Proposition 2 and 1/2. And then in closing, in addition to all the $459.7 million of capital improvement program through the five years, I respect to recommend discussion continue with the Honorable Town Council on the following items, the reuse of the town buildings, which is IBF Farm and North Branch Library and former police station, record storage management and related issues, Department of Public Works staging areas, and acquisition of land for open space indoor recreation use. I look forward to working with the Honorable Town Council and their adoption of conceptual recommendations in the fiscal year 21 to 2025 capital improvement program over the next four weeks, Mr. President.
Thank you. Next item is a request for confirmation of an appointment to the licensing board.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President, in bringing forward tonight and provisions and pursuant to provisions of the Home Rule Charter and the Town Council ordinance on a process for appointments to town boards, commissions and committees, bringing forward an appointment tonight, the licensing board, Mr. John Lamedini, 499 Main Street, to a term, a three-year term, to February 15, 2023. Under the Town Council rules, this appointment would be referred to the Committee on Personnel and Town Organization for their review and report back to the full council.
Next item is a request for confirmation of an appointment to the Cable Access Corporation Board of Directors. Mr. Manager.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Again, this was a follow-up to correspondence that was forwarded originally back in November that, and additionally, Dr. Galston had sent Mr. David Stokes, a school committee member, to a term of September 15, 2022. If you recall, this would be, Ms. Eileen Balzer had retired, if you will, as of December 31 of 2019. Mr. Stokes would become the new school committee member. Is, as you recall, tonight, earlier tonight, the Committee on Education, School System Matters, had an interview for one of the appointees that were recommended at the November Town Council meeting. Additionally, there was some housekeeping where the three members from the school department who make up, there was nine board of directors, three from the school department who had been recommended there were considered and at the next council meeting, Mr. President, it's my understanding, the Committee on Education, School System Matters will have a report on one remaining appointee plus the three that were recommended from the school system, including Mr. Stokes tonight. Mr. President.
Thank you. Anything else from you, Mr. Manager?
Uh, no, no, sir.
Request for information. Any requests? Counselor Cornelis.
Thank you. I have two follow-ups this evening. I had previously sent out communication to the town team indicating numerous departments regarding improvements to the intersection of Coolidge Avenue and Grove Street that were brought to my attention by a local resident. This was submitted, was sent out last May and then again on February the 7th. Also, discussion of late-night deliveries on Bigelow Avenue. This was from last fall and the resident subsequently sent out photographs that I submitted on February the 4th and I will be following up with the communication for everyone. Thank you.
Counselor Feltner.
Thank you, Mr. President. Request for information from you for an update on the status of the town manager's contract and succession planning.
Thank you. Any other requests? Announcements? Any announcements? Counselor Palumbo?
Just real quick, I say that the Watertown Community Gardens is holding their annual meeting this Thursday from 6:30 to 8 in the Watertown Savings Bank room of the Watertown Free Public Library. That is the Watertown Community Gardens annual meeting.
Are there any other announcements? I just have one that on February 27th, which is a different night, there are two things going on. It's a, Community Preservation Committee is having another public forum. What is it, Lodia?
It's, it's a meeting.
Regular meeting.
Presenting results from the public forum.
They're, they're going to announce the results of the public forum and then the school building committee is also meeting that evening and that's a change due to several of the key team members will not be available on their regular evening. And on the 27th, we will continue discussions about the high school. Any other announcements? Public forum. Any member? Yes.
It's an old, re-run. A year ago, at the beginning of the new council, I asked if there was any way that the committee meeting minutes and the original referral could be put into separate files so it's easier to go in and see what the original referral was and then track the information meeting to meeting. So I'm patient. Many people think I'm not, but it's another year's gone by, so I thought I'd ask again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the general public? Yes. Please identify yourself.
Hi, I'm David Agerston and I live up the road on Fayette Street. And I'd like to, I'm not sure when this is really most appropriate, but I'd like to speak up on behalf of Winter Street and Fayette Street. I've been here over 30 years and I've never seen anyone really address the condition of Winter Street. You know, some of the sidewalks are so long ago gone that there's just dirt, some grass maybe in some places. Why is it always forgotten? You know, I've talked, I've talked to the Public Works Department, Jerry Me, who seems to be most deaf on this, I don't know why, and it seems to continue. So I wish somebody would look at that roadway area and say, why isn't this ever taken care of? And maybe do something about that. In, in conjunction with that, some years ago, about 30-something years ago, the area between Pearl Street and Winter Street on Fayette Street was raised about six inches or so. And if you walk up Winter Street and you look at what's left of some of the curbing, you can see how it sort of dead ends into Fayette Street. And so the sidewalks are now in some areas lower than the street. So perhaps that could be on this agenda of fixing the roads and sidewalks. There's some areas around here that they've gotten their sidewalks fixed some, some three times in these years, but never this Winter Street and never Fayette Street. Some parts of Fayette Streets got done. Maybe they had something in, I don't know, who knows? But I would like to, you know, have some attention brought to that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, can I get a motion to adjourn? So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you.
We've got five minutes to go.
Always do.
Yeah. By the way.
10:20.